I'd like to call to order the work session for the City Council of the City of Wildwood for Monday, February 25, 2019. Would you please call, roll?
Mayor Boland.
Here.
Councilmember Grignani.
Yes.
Councilmember McGowan.
Here.
Councilmember Bartoni.
Here.
Councilmember Manten.
Here.
Councilmember Shea.
Here.
Councilmember Dillard.
Here.
Councilmember Dodwell.
Here.
Councilmember Taylor.
Here.
Councilmember Bertolino.
Here.
Councilmember McCutcheon.
Here.
Councilmember Bo.
Present.
Councilmember Jordan. Councilmember Stein.
Here.
Councilmember Werther.
Present.
Councilmember Giratano.
Here.
Councilmember Stevens.
Here.
Okay, thank you. For those of you in the audience this evening, thank you for being here. If you have a cellphone or other electronic device that is on, if you would please turn it to silent, we would appreciate that. Moving on to informational items, it looks like, according to my count, we have six and no action items, so that's the reason for the start at 6:30. Are there any items under information that any member of the council has a question about or would like to discuss? Councilmember McCutcheon?
Yeah. Um, where's Joe? In committee, we were talking about the bridge in the community park. Is that going to be pedestrian or is that going to be mobile and pedestrian?
Based upon our last conversations at the Planning and Parks Committee, the intent was to build a bridge that could accommodate both vehicular and pedestrian traffic, but it would only be open at this time for pedestrians. Under discussion we'll have tomorrow night, I'll give more details.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you. Any other questions or Councilmember McGowan?
When I looked over the information regarding that Better Together proposal, there was a, there was a link that was included or mentioned in the, from DePaul, I think it was. It was included in the memorandum about it, at least in mine. I never was able to get it active, but I understand from Councilmember Bartolino that he went on site to DePaul, to DePaul, and was able to look it up. I just wonder if we could get, make arrangements to get that out to everybody.
You want to go ahead and speak to that? Mr. Cross?
There is a lengthy, very comprehensive study done by the City of DePaul from a financial standpoint that the state auditor is requesting, and if that link wasn't working, I apologize, and we, I can send that out to the council members tomorrow, hard copies, or by email if you wish.
If you could.
Be glad to do that, sir.
Thank you, Steve. Councilmember Shea?
Yeah, the, I think it's the same link. PowerPoint, it's a PowerPoint from the mayor of DePaul, and it's really comprehensive. It'd really be great if, because what they've done is a comparison of impacts on their budget, if this goes through, and it'd be great if we could do something like that. I mean, it looks like it's a little onerous to do that, those financial comparisons, it might take a while, but I think it would be really helpful for us as a council and for the public at large. I don't know if maybe that was the thought in following that along or not, but it's pretty helpful.
Well, to that point, my recollection is from the material on the Better Together website, they speak to this not affecting the funding of municipalities because of the municipality's reliance on real estate taxes and so forth, whereas we don't, as the council knows, we don't have a real estate tax. So, I think it would be a good idea to try to determine, should their ideas occur, what exactly the financial implication would be for the city. I think that Councilmember Shea's point. So, Councilmember Giratano?
I do have a question. I recall reading that, I believe it was the state auditor had asked municipalities to conduct an analysis of what this would do to their finances, and I was just wondering if we had received that request here in Wildwood, and were we planning to respond if so?
Steve?
Um, yes, we have received that request a couple of times, actually. Initially, prior to Better Together revising their plan, and then the state auditor sent out another request approximately a week ago. The timeframe to respond to that was extremely short, in fact, unreasonably short. The City of DePaul, it took them, Ms. Shea, four days with multiple people to put that analysis together. It's quite comprehensive, but far more comprehensive than we would probably do. So, Mr. Giratano, the short answer is no, we have not. We've been in discussions with City Attorney Young regarding that. It is not a requirement. We can do it, but it would be quite short, honestly. I mean, if you take away our sales tax revenues and capital sales tax revenues, basically all that leaves is our utility tax revenue, which perhaps might account for about 10%, 15%, maybe 20%. The short answer is, if I were to respond to the state auditor, basically said the financial impact is devastating, without going through four days' worth of work, and at the end of the day, it's my opinion, it doesn't matter anyway. The folks at Better Together know that what it's going to do to the communities within the county, so quantifying it and taking four, or five, or 10 mandates to put something together, which at the end, if it goes through, isn't going to matter, and if it doesn't go through, doesn't matter, we've got a whole lot of other things to focus on rather than something like that, that at the end of the day is not going to help us.
Well, I agree that what we would have left if the Better Together plan were to become reality, that the only revenue that this city could have is the utility tax, or if there are cities out there that collect a property tax, which Wildwood does not.
Correct.
And based on what I've read, and I'm sure all in the council have heard about it, the plan to take away the control from the City of Wildwood, they would basically leave us behind with only the parks to maintain, if we provide trash service, which we contract with Meridian, and then I think the only other piece is if the municipality has its own local fire department, which we are part of a fire district. So therefore, I do think it is straightforward. It's basically what we collect, which are the utility taxes and paying for parks, plus any other types of administrative costs left behind, and everything else would be captured by this new metropolitan St. Louis city. So, I thank you for the thorough response.
Councilmember Shea?
I guess the point of the analysis would not, in my mind, would not be to, it would not be to serve an effort to persuade Better Together. I don't think that that would, you know, we're not going to sway them, they're not going to change their mind, they're going forward. I guess the purpose, for me, would be to start the conversation with the community about the impacts, and because really what we're talking about here is, in worst-case scenario, this happens, and we're left with minimal financial support. We've got to look at some pretty serious reductions in staff, reductions in services, and really strategically changing our future plans. Our whole five-year strategic goals change, everything changes, and I guess the point, and I'm not saying we should spend, you know, untold man hours on preparation of this, because I get it, it's, it could either be very simple or it's going to be very complicated. Probably going to be more simple, because it's going to be devastating. But I think if it's not this analysis, then some form of inspection of the financial impact that needs to be prepared to communicate with the residents, and I think that does two things. It educates them first and foremost, and secondly, could activate them. I think there's already a high level of awareness with regard to this issue in the community, but it can't be too high, as far as I'm concerned. This is the premier issue that's facing, that's threatening the city. So, maybe not that analysis, but some form of narrative that gets created so that we can communicate that with the residents and put it in perspective. If you like parks and planning, guess what? It's going to get hit hard, and so are a lot of the other services. I think it's to our benefit and to our credit as a council to be a bit proactive in establishing that narrative. Thank you.
Co-Administrator Cross?
Councilmember Shea, I appreciate your perspective, and if it's the council's wishes, Finance Officer Don Kaiser and I will put together an analysis, as you've mentioned, and we can do that, that I think would be informative to not only the council but to the residents, so I'll commit to doing that if that's the wishes of the council.
Is there any objection from any member of the council of that proceeding? Okay, seeing no objection. Councilmember Grignani?
Thank you. I have a couple of questions, one for Mr. Brown, one for Mr. Vunich. Mr. Brown, there on the docket tonight is a bill, I think it's 2448, for the cut-through on Etherington Road. Is there anything we need to know about this prior to the discussion on the bill later today?
Um, nothing strikes me. This was a concern that was raised to the Board of Public Safety. We did hear from a large number of residents that live along the road, concerned about traffic that cuts through on Etherington Road. They were also concerned about the speed of the traffic, so this was reviewed by Public Safety, and the decision that was ultimately reached was to restrict the through-traffic on the road.
I think there's some of the residents that are here tonight, they're going to be talking later, so we'll hear more about that. The second question is for Mr. Vunich, and regarding the internet, rural internet, you said you have a rural internet update. What's your update?
The main update that's included in the department's letter for tonight's meeting is just a summary of the number of households that are served by the two providers that we've installed infrastructure for, that would be Bay's ET and Whisper ISP, and also it provides a good summary of the major initiatives that the Rural Internet Access Committee has undertaken since its inception in December 2007. Those are the primary ones. I guess the best news is that Rocky Ridge Road and Old Wildhorse Creek Road are now serviced by Bay's ET. They are slowly following up on leads and adding customers, and we hope that the internet is as promised.
Your consultant that we've hired, she, I may have been dreaming this, but I thought I saw in the contract that she has to be reporting to us with something by May. Is that correct?
Yes, we actually had a update conference call late Friday. The agenda had to be published, so I wasn't able to put information from that conference call in the department's letter, but they are working very diligently to meet that timeline. It appears it may be mid-June instead of May.
Because of an Admin Public Works Committee meeting, I was unable to attend the meeting when she was here, but does she have any, did she have any perspective on what the success might be of getting grant money for the fiber optic?
Unfortunately, she discovered what the Rural Internet Access Committee and many of the city's elected officials have over the course of the last 12 years, is that Wildwood is rural in many locations, but not rural enough to obtain federal grant monies.
Thank you.
Joe, if I could, just to follow up on that real quickly, topic, and if these already exist, that would be great, but I guess the question is, you know, it's good that we have the consultant, you know, we're trying to determine how to tackle this issue. I guess I would be more comfortable if we have what I would call measurable activities by certain dates, a certain number of households that we want to see connected, and maybe if that does exist, we could get that to the council so we can see what those are, and if it doesn't exist, I guess I would ask that the committee look at that, and let's set some targets and try to, you know, in other words, goals, and try to meet those and so forth, and that may or may not be related to the compensation of the consultant.
At the end of our conference call, Tom Asp, the, one of the team of consultants working with Ms. Hovis, sent over to us exactly what you just described, with the updated information based upon our conference call and discussions. I will email that to all the city council tomorrow.
Good. All right. Thank you. Councilmember Taylor?
Well, I had raised my hand to discuss the Better Together and the fiscal analysis, so, I mean, I agree with what has been said. I am sure Mr. Cross is competent to do it, so I'm going to withdraw my request to speak for the interest of brevity.
Councilmember Bartoni?
Kind of ditto. I was going to actually make the motion that we did move forward with getting a financial analysis. I think it's important that we make sure that our residents do understand, I mean, Better Together has a much stronger marketing team than probably all the municipalities combined, so they have been putting out a lot of very good marketing on, for, to support their cause, and even residents that I've talked to in our subdivision in Wildwood and other places in the county have made comments that, and you kind of get the understanding that they're not fully educated on the proposal yet, so I think it is important that we do educate our residents. I feel confident they can do, make a vote which is best for them, but I think we need to make sure that we give them as much information that we have as possible.
Administrator Cross?
Councilmember Bartoni, I agree with you, as I said earlier, so in addition to preparing the financial analysis, you are probably aware that we've also engaged the services of our marketing arm, and they are preparing various pieces of information that will be going out to residents, again, keeping them informed, updated in terms of what is happening more on a global basis, but also what we specifically in Wildwood are doing. For example, the ad hoc committee that's going to be named this evening, so we are engaging in our own marketing efforts, irrespective of what other communities or even the Missouri Municipal League is doing.
Councilmember Dodwell?
I was going to make the same request of Mr. Cross, that we make sure that we put out the word on, these are the activities that the city's involved in. The other council members have spoken to that, and I want to thank Mr. Cross for being willing to take on the task. I think the financials need to be in a clear and concise format. We don't need 900 pages of budget information. We need a very simple, this is just how you stated it, kind of dialogue for our residents in our marketing materials and in the information details that we do provide, so that they don't get lost in the depth of knowledge that you guys already have and understand. Okay.
Thank you, Councilmember Manten.
Joe, back to the rural internet.
Yes, sir.
Based on the providers that are out there and the technology we have, when they get to close to their endgame, will there be a significant number of houses left without service?
Unfortunately, I think there will be a greater number than we hope. As you can see from the information provided in the update letter, we're just over 500 households now. That number compares to about 1,200 when we started this process, so we've halved that number. That doesn't take into, that number doesn't take into account subdivisions that have gone out on their own and gotten some type of internet service. In Ward 1, Wildhorse Springs Farm did exactly that with Spectrum, so my guess is, is that maybe there's another 500 or so households out there. I believe if we get 50% or 60% of them, we probably have done as good a job as we can, but we'll always strive to get as many.
Okay.
Again, that's premised on this wireless network. Our consultant may bring back a different approach that could serve all households, and that's our hope.
Okay, thank you, Joe.
Thank you.
Any other questions or comments on anything from any member of the council for items under information? All right, seeing none, as I mentioned earlier, we don't have any action items, nothing under miscellaneous, so I think at this point, we would entertain a motion to adjourn and have our council meeting that begins at 7:00. Made by Councilmember Manten, seconded by Councilmember Bartoni, non-debatable. All in favor of the motion to adjourn, please say aye. Any oppose? Any abstentions? Okay, we'll be adjourned from the work session, and we will start our council meeting at 7:00 o'clock. Thank you. Thank you. Here we go. I'd like to call to order the meeting of the City Council for the City of Wildwood for Monday, February 25, 2019. Madam Clerk, would you please call the roll?
Mayor Boland.
Here.
Councilmember Gregg Nani.
Here.
Councilmember McGowan.
Here.
Councilmember Bartoni.
Here.
Councilmember Manten.
Here.
Councilmember Shea.
Here.
Councilmember Dillard.
Here.
Councilmember Dodwell.
Here.
Councilmember Taylor.
Here.
Councilmember Bertolino.
Here.
Councilmember McCutcheon.
Here.
Councilmember Boe.
Present.
Councilmember Jordan.
Here.
Councilmember Stein.
Here.
Councilmember Werther.
Present.
Councilmember Garitano.
Here.
Councilmember Stevens.
Here.
Okay, thank you, and welcome to everyone in the audience. Thank you for being here with us this evening. If you have a cellphone or other electronic device, if you would please turn, if it's on, the volume to silent, we would appreciate that. And for those who are comfortably able, if you would please also stand with me to say the Pledge of Allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for
Thank you, and next on the agenda is the approval of the minutes from the Council's February 11, 2019 work session and regular agenda. If there are no comments or questions on the minutes, I would entertain a motion to approve the minutes. Councilmember Gregg Nani?
Yes, on the work session minutes, on the third page, on the joint action, it was also about the administration of the Works Committee and the application of the working policy. I read through that and there's something missing. There was a, there was a motion made by Mr. Taylor to modify the motion and then have tough to fail. But I believe that Mr. Young wrote out a motion for him, Mr. Taylor read that because it shows up on the video that he was looking at that motion, he didn't write that, and so where is that document?
Councilmember Taylor?
He did not write it for me. He was, when I spoke the motion, he wrote it, and I was restating the motion, and he was showing me what I had said. And actually, I rephrased it from what it actually, what I had said before, so if you view the tape, I made the original motion, he took a dictation, I was going to rephrase the motion, he showed me what I had said, but I rephrased it, I didn't use what I had said before, but altered my statement.
But it was in fact written out, is that not so?
So you're trying to go?
It was my notes for the meeting, which I do for almost every motion made.
So, Councilmember Gregg Nani, specifically to approval of the minutes and their accuracy, do you have any question about the minutes and the accuracy of the minutes?
No, given that explanation, I'll forego any further discussion on the matter.
Okay, thank you. Any further questions or comments relative to the minutes? If not, I would entertain a motion to approve the minutes. Councilmember McGowan makes the motion to approve the minutes. Is there a second to the motion, maybe Councilmember Stevens? Any discussion on the motion? Seeing no discussion, all in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Any abstentions?
Abstain.
Councilmember Stein abstains. Any other abstentions? Seeing none, moving to public participation. I'd like to mention just a couple of things about this before we begin. It is a valuable component of our meeting. Anyone who wishes to speak must complete a speaker card and provide it to the city clerk who is seated to your left of the podium. When your name is called, please approach the podium and state your name and your ward. To ensure that all who wish to speak have the opportunity to do so, there is a five-minute time limitation. I will let you know when the time limitation is reached. If you have any questions for us, please mention that during your remarks and identify the official you would like to respond. That official will make note of it, and at the conclusion of public participation, any official who chooses to respond will have three minutes to do so as to all questions directed to that official. The official may choose to respond to your questions after tonight's meeting, and we may also post any responses on the City Council page of our website. And finally, please be respectful to others in making your remarks. Interrupting others and using profane and abusive language are prohibited, and I want to thank everyone in advance for following these. First speaker card, please.
Patricia Fuller.
Can you all hear me okay? Patricia Fuller, Ward 6. So, I read with interest the resolution brought forth by Greg Stein to censure Councilmember Shea, and I wanted to add a couple items for you to consider when you discuss issue tonight. At the City Council meeting in 2018, where the final vote was taken for the zip line, Greg Alexander and Greg Stein both voted yes, and I approached them after the meeting ended, and I said, "Do you realize that you just approved for this man to spend $2.5 million and you don't even have the results of the final sound study?" Well, they both looked at me for a minute, and then Greg Stein said, "That's his problem", and then bust out laughing. Now, first of all, the operation of the zip line, if it proves to be in violation of the noise ordinance, it's not just Tim Boyd's problem, it's my problem as a resident that has to live near it and put up with it, and it's also the city's problem to figure out the next steps. I was just shocked that a council member would take such a flippant, unprofessional attitude, and also that he would say it to a resident. I found that it lacked dignity and respect for me as a resident and also the owner of Hidden Valley. Secondly, there was a council meeting, possibly the same evening, where Mr. Stein made a suggestion that Hidden Valley could put signs up at the platforms where there was some question about the noise, and the sign would ask riders to be quiet. Well, that brought a reaction from some of the people in attendance that varied from laughter and disbelief to openly mocking. Some in the audience were quite vocal at that particular moment, it was disruptive. Mr. Stein had then what I would describe as an emotional meltdown. He yelled very loudly at the residents in attendance, and while I don't remember his exact words, and I didn't go back and look for that on the tapes, my perception was that of a person who was exhibiting inappropriate behavior and was not in control of his emotions. Now, I don't have the details of the occasions where Ms. Shea has allegedly used crude, threatening, and inappropriate language, as stated in this resolution you're going to talk about tonight, but I do find it troublesome that Mr. Stein, of all people on council, whose behavior I have observed as crude, threatening, and inappropriate on two occasions, would bring this forward against Ms. Shea. So I want you to consider my comments when you debate this issue. I find it hypocritical of council to even consider this issue when other members of council have not always exhibited this professional and dignified manner of behavior. If this resolution passes, it will give the impression that the only way this council knows how to deal with strong, assertive women is to censure them. Thank you very much.
Thank you. Next speaker card, please.
Connie Pepper.
Mr. Mayor, councilmembers, thank you for this opportunity. My name is Connie Pepper. My name is Connie Pepper, and I am in Ward 6, and I would like to say that I understand we had a very low turnout for voters to vote on term limits, but the majority of the people who did bother to vote, voted for term limits. And I do say this out of great respect for Mr. Boe, because I adore him, and I think that he did a great job, but I think that we, the voters, voted for limits, and I do also understand that there was, the very last sentence said that the people in office would already, would be grandfathered in. Well, I'm a teacher, and I didn't read the last sentence, and that was unfortunate, but I think a lot of people did the same thing, did not read all the way to the very last sentence. We would like term limits, we would like them for the people who've been in office longer than eight years, to give other residents of Wildwood who are intelligent, they're qualified, they're experienced, the opportunity to serve Wildwood, and I guess that's it. Thank you very much.
Thank you. Next speaker card, please.
Kelly Werther.
Kelly Werther, Ward 7, and this is a statement, I have no questions. While other municipalities have on their agendas the possibility of the city-county merger and how to respond, the City of Wildwood has on theirs the agenda of one man, Mayor Boland, and his agenda is that of ruining the reputation of Councilmember Shea. Councilmember Shea and Councilmember Stevens are the only two council members that I have seen in writing and talking about on social media about saving Wildwood, and Mr. Stevens, specifically, and Ms. Shea about the Meridian trash issue. Those are some real problems we have here in Wildwood. But, we have Councilmember Stein, "Mr., I only have six meetings left, and I want a pound of her flesh", writing censure resolutions. A council member who on video is screaming at residents during a Hidden Valley chaos, screaming at a resident who after the Ward 6 debacle, screaming at the incoming council member for Ward 7, and not sure how to describe the aggressive stance towards Councilmember Shea a few meetings ago. Let's look at the resolutions and emails from three women in Wildwood. Three women who, number one, was a friend of her and her husband, Councilmember Taylor, for almost 25 years. Ex-friend and Ward 3 resident who was friends with Councilmember Shea and received a great representation from Councilmember Shea. And another Ward 3 resident who stood at this very podium last meeting in tears over her feelings for Councilmember Shea. Really, you three are wasting my time and the other residents of Wildwood over friendships that have gone foul. Take it off the taxpayers and off the dais. What I'm going to do with you tonight is I'm going to share not the only reason why Councilmember Stein should receive a censure, but also candidate and Councilmember Joe Garitano. In the summer of 2017, many saw how Councilmember Shea was being targeted, and the business of the city was being neglected due to the lack of leadership, both by the elected and the employed. And that was numerous of you that summer. Some of you are still in the dais, and there was a general consensus, and that was, it was said that from, the concern was due to the lack of inability for Mayor Boland to lead. But one of you went a little bit further, and that was Councilmember Garitano. He shared a little secret with me. He actually divulged to me, and told me knowingly, that Mayor Boland had been targeting Councilmember Shea. It began before she entered elected office, with barring her from an EPA meeting, and it allegedly continues this evening. Councilmember Shea was targeted during the April 10, 2017 closed session. Councilmember Garitano discussed to me a quid pro quo, and that was, a vote was taken. The vote was taken to not go after Councilmember Shea for using the term "planning tomorrow today" in an email. If they did that, then council would also not go after the charter complaints towards Mayor Boland and a few council members for allegedly violating Section 11.3 out of the City of Wildwood Charter. You see, I've been a personal target for Mayor Boland, as has Councilmember Werther, Councilmember Stevens, Councilmember Dillard, and Councilmember Jordan. I kept what Councilmember Garitano said quiet for a while, and I've had enough. I filed a complaint against him to the Missouri Attorney General's Office. After weeks of inquiries, it was established that my complaint was too late for enforcement under the one-year statute of limitations. However, the attorney and the office of the Attorney General said they would continue the investigation if I was interested. Councilmember Garitano, City of Wildwood, do you not think that this is a cause for censure? Or Councilman Stein's behavior I mentioned earlier not cause for a censure? I can tell you, there's currently two open complaints at the Missouri Attorney General's Office that include Councilmember Manten and Mayor Boland. Others are written for the Missouri Ethics Commission in a response on a recent claim from the Attorney General's Office suggesting that the complaint go to the Missouri Auditor's Office. My time is wearing down. Y'all, you can censure Councilmember Shea tonight if you vote for it, but I must implore, if you write a censure for Councilmember Shea, you must also write one for Councilmember Stein and Councilmember Garitano. At the March meeting, I will share with you another story for censuring Mayor Boland. If you don't like Councilmember Shea, don't like her. You don't have to like her. I see there's a strong problem, though, up there in council. Strong women, strong women who are smart and effective are often disliked, but that does not equal censure. Thank you.
Thank you. Next speaker card, please.
Stephen Cook.
Stephen Cook?
Good evening, Honorable Mayor and Council. My name is Steve Cook, I live in Ward 8 on Lancaster Estates Drive in Wildwood, and before you this evening to oppose the extension as requested from Covert-Corsair for the property at 16185 Manchester Road, known as PZ14-07. I'm a retired builder, having built homes and condos in Chesterfield, Wildwood, Melville, and unincorporated St. Louis County. I built my own home in 1995 in Lancaster Estates just before we became Wildwood, and my neighbors were my customers at the time. I'm becoming increasingly disappointed in the direction our city is headed regarding residential development. Our rules and guidelines have become increasingly more lenient as far as allowing more units per acre, site disturbance and virgin green area retainment. When my company, TCI Development, built the Lancaster Woods Estate subdivision, we preserved the natural topography and foliage of the entire subdivision. Slowly but surely, Wildwood has allowed more site disturbances and existing forest loss under the guise of clustering. This Covert-Corsair 11-acre site began with a zoning for 7,500 square foot residential properties. This was relaxed and was rezoned to become a commercial mix with 168 condo units having basement parking. I was not happy about this because of the increased housing density, because I live here, but I felt that the undercover parking would at least dictate that we would end up with a higher caliber development. I did not like it, but I felt that it's hard to stop progress. We have witnessed delays, requests for extensions, modifications to allow apartments, and recommendations overrule. So here we are 12 years later, facing another extension request to build apartments. The last extension ended January 17, 2019. I view this as a form of contract between the builder and the city. The contract has expired, and we are now out of contract. I believe that the P&amp;Z Commission has recommended the extension be approved tonight, and at the same time revert zoning condos and apartments having underground parking. My hope is that there is a way this council can use this opportunity. Apartments and will require underground parking. I do not want a 168-unit apartment complex in my part of the City of Wildwood. I would guess that residents of Nire Acres will be disappointed in having 168 acres, 168 apartments in their backyard, as would most, if not all, residents of Wildwood if polled. Wildwood does not seem so financially distressed that we need to approve an apartment project of this magnitude in what is becoming a quickly highly populated town center area. Our businesses seem to be doing well. I can see no benefit to our Wildwood residents by allowing a 168 apartment project be built. Why would any of us want this? It seems that the only beneficiary of this project would be the developer, yet Wildwood spends hour after hour reviewing proposals, making recommendations, giving presentations, granting extensions, and in general bending over backwards to accommodate a development in our town center that I'm sure most of us really do. Thank you.
Thank you. Thank you. Next speaker card, please.
Dan McLaughlin.
Dan McLaughlin, Ward 6. Mr. Boland.
Ward 3.
Damn, I've been to too many Ward 6 meetings. Uh, Ward 3. Mr. Boland, Mr. Stein, and all the councilmembers who have been party to the harassment of Councilmember Shay, Dillard, Stevens, Jordan, and Werther, my comments are directed to you. In addition to the residents that have participated in the shallow attacks borne out by personal vendetta, not council business, especially to those of you who have benefited from the work of the councilmembers mentioned. And you know who, and you know what those benefits have been. You live with the benefit of Councilmember Shay's dedicated work on your behalf. You have benefited from her hard work and mine, our efforts which you ungraciously accepted without gratitude, but returned with personal attacks that are false and disgraceful. To use the word, to use the hard work, knowledge, and generosity of us to get to where you are and turn into political beast is disturbing to watch. For two years, we have been subject to continuous abuse documented with evidence that is ignored by councilmembers who alleviate themselves from truth just to cling to prejudice, character assassination, and whisper campaigns. You blatantly ignore the most inappropriate, illegal action of a former councilmember, Jerry Porter. Even after he admitted his political motivation, he physically attacked me for simply being in a room during a public meeting. I'm provoked and ignored by this body who now wants to pretend to have some standard of behavior test applied to Councilmember Shay for which she has already been vindicated. Mr. Stein, your angry outburst at me is worthy of censure. And I have never received an apology. I watch weekly. While processes are manipulated, excuses are made for illegality, city business takes a backseat to political axe grinding. The podium is a launching pad for political campaigns, which if Ms. Shay did, would be shut down immediately, and rightfully so. Political blogs are filled with lies and distortions are advertised from the dais. Councilmembers are shut down, prevented from speaking, while others are allowed to denigrate others without challenge. The mayor refused to answer questions, lies about his own behavior, and nothing's addressed. Where is the standard of conduct applied for all of that? Why should it be applied to only one person? Because she is strong, she is smart, she is effective, and she speaks the truth. I don't see Shay, Stevens, Werther, Dillard, or Jordan calling for censures. Maybe they should. I suspect they don't because citizens are tired of the abuse and retaliation. They want more, they want to move on to the city business rather than the childish tactics and personality attacks. The city under Boland's influence has now been infected like a disease, and it is clearly spreading. It's ugly, it's sick, and we are tired of it. Grow up or get out. If you have issues you need to work out about your self-confidence, your ego, your inability in to measure right from wrong, do it somewhere else. Leave the city to those who can restore and correct the problem Mr. Boland has inspired. You think the election of 2018 was significant? There's more to come. Your fear is showing. Censure Greg Stein and Mayor Boland, I dare you to have an open hearing about the charter complaints without the interference of a conflicted attorney. I challenge you, Mayor Boland, to run your campaigns without using your title. Your reliance on official authority shows to illustrate your weakness and not your strength. And you are weak. Threatening arrest threats of any kind are sure signs you don't have what it takes, and every time you threaten people, you expose your childish tendencies and their confidence.
How much more do you have?
I got one more sentence.
Okay.
Feels a path forward, but you are not taking it. You are relying on intimidation and manipulation. Tired, sad, and deplorable. You should be ashamed, and you know who you are.
Thank you. Next speaker card, please.
Mark Harder.
Good evening, Council. I'm Mark Harder, Councilman, St. Louis County, and I might want to change up the topic to something a little bit lighter. How about county merger? So that's the big elephant in the room for the last almost month now. I'm making my rounds to all the council meetings in my district, 7th District, and so I thought I would stop in here tonight. I thought it would be a real quiet meeting, and we could talk about county merger. But I know you have other things going on, so I won't take too much of your time. But I do want to encourage you, if you haven't, this is the report. This is the Better Together Report. Hopefully, you've all gotten your copy either offline, or someone has spent a lot of money and went to Kinko's and made it for you. But this is the report, and I want to encourage all the cities because it does affect you as municipalities, and it also affects the St. Louis County government as well. I want to encourage you all to understand it, to read it. I've gone through it twice. Every time I read it, I see something else, and it makes me matter. Get your highlighter out, look for words. You'll see things in here that every time, you'll see things a little bit differently. Things like social equity. You'll see things like income equity, income inequity. You'll see things about equalizing opportunities and zip codes and things like that. So we just need to understand this, and like I say, I'm going around encouraging everyone to make sure that they are up to speed on it, because as county officials and as city officials, we will be held responsible of our knowledge of this and what it means to our residents and how they want to be represented in the future. I, of course, are against it, and say that publicly and with pride. I also want to make sure that we are far letting the city and the county residents decide their fate. And that's what we need to work on as well. So there's a lot of different groups attacking this from different ways, and one of them is against, of course, the vote, making sure that the city and the county residents vote on anything that would come up. We don't need people in Joplin or Dent County telling us how we want to be governed. So hopefully, you can talk to your residents, talk to your neighbors, make sure you get out the word that this is not what we want as residents of West St. Louis County and St. Louis County in general. The other thing I want to talk to you about is the initiative petition that the municipal league has developed to create the freeholder process, and hopefully, you've received your copies of this. If not, I can get copies to you of this and anyone here that would like some copies as well. But we want to make sure that people are signing the petition in order to create the freeholder process. And there's sheets here with 15, no, 20 spots to sign, and we need 15,000 of these signatures in St. Louis County alone, 5,000 in the city, in order to farm this freeholders group. And that will be something we need. We need people at the April, I know probably half of you are up for reelection or election in April, and it would be nice to have some of your workers at the poll to talk to people as they come to vote and ask them if they would like to sign this petition drive to start the freeholders process. So that might be another place to get signatures and get some turned in. The petition itself has a copy of the rules that are in the Missouri Constitution. They're on the backside. The front side is the petition itself, and instructions on how to complete it. So if you're interested in that, or anyone here is interested in that, I can make sure that you can get some copies of this going forward. So we need your help to get this done. We've got to make sure that our voices are heard, that academics are not the only ones running this area, and that we can make sure that we represent our people the way they elected us to run them. So with that, I'm open for any questions.
Mark, since this is public participation, we'll have to take a pass on those questions.
That's fine.
We can set another time at your convenience to bring you back if you'd like to do that.
Okay. Thank you all. Talk to you later.
Thank you. And thank you for being here. Next speaker card, please.
Carrie Tebby.
Can you all hear me? My name's Carrie Tebby. I live in Ward 4. First of all, we had a meeting in our subdivision, a trustee meeting, and I want to thank my councilmembers in Ward 4 for coming, and the mayor. I appreciate it. My residents or our residents in our subdivision had a lot of questions, and you gave us some pretty good answers, and we appreciate you coming. We're basically apolitical. We take care of subdivision business and landscaping and things like that. That being said, I'd like to move forward to a blog that's written by Mr. Taylor, it's called Wildwood Matters. And I get it, Wildwood matters. But I have seen disparaging remarks about councilmen and councilwomen on this blog that shouldn't be on there. If you're going to talk about Wildwood, or how you're going to vote, and how you're not going to vote, and what you agree with and what you don't agree with in relation to the city's business, I get that. But when you get personal and start attacking councilwomen and/or councilmen, I think that's beyond the pale. You need to stop. You're all professionals up here. Let's act professional, okay? Particularly on the dais. You're all professionals. But away from the dais, it seems like it's like enough, enough. So that's my comment on that. I have another comment about this censure related to Ms. Shay that's brought forward by Mr. Stein. I understand that Mr. Stein has a temper problem. Apparently, he likes to pound his hands on a table if he gets riled up. I just watched the videotape of the meeting that occurred on February 22nd before I came here, I take that back, on 1/28/2019 before I came here. And at the four-hour mark, I saw the councilpeople walk back in to the dais, and I saw Ms. Shay slowly walk over to Mr. Stein, bend over and said something to him. He abruptly got up and he snapped his knees to attention. That, to me, implied that he was pretty upset. And frankly, if I was a woman, I'd be a little frightened. So that being said, I think it's ridiculous, these censors. You censored Tim Werther, you're censoring Ms. Shay. Who else is going to be censored? Let's conduct the city's business and do away with all this stuff. Enough already. I'm asking you folks to be polite to one another, be polite to your constituents, and let's get the city's business done. With that, that's all I have to say. Thank you very much.
Thank you. Next speaker card, please.
My name's Andy Irvine. I'm in Ward 1. Thank you all for letting me speak. I live in the Orbital Schoolhouse, right by the creek and One Lane Bridge. And the reason I'm here to talk is about the cut-through traffic that we're experiencing. And I have a couple of suggestions. I won't take up much of your time, but if you're going to consider ways to kind of control this, signage at the 109 access to Etherington Road, and then also up at Wild Horse Creek End, stating that Monday through Friday is the only real problem there. And it's 7:00 to 9:00 a.m. and 3:00 to 6:00 p.m. Now, Wildwood police do a great job of traffic control when they can. I guess budget has something to do with it, but a lot of times, there'll be officers parked along there that are not in these peak hours. And this is when, you know, you have students cutting through, and then a lot of business people coming and going to work. And so the signage, you know, those hours posted, no cut-through traffic, I don't know what the proper wording would have to be, you know, to make it legal. And, you know, it's a 25 mile an hour speed zone through there, and I've actually had people, and there's a, you know, I'm one of 11 historic landmarks in Wildwood. And two doors up, my neighbors in the three-story building, there's a hill there, and if you can believe it, I actually have people passing me when I come home that are doing like 50, 60 miles an hour on this road, and this is a daily situation. It's all the time, and it's gotten worse. And I know with the bridge project, when the bridge goes in, and they're going to double the length, the width, the height of the bridge, the traffic's only going to get worse unless we get a handle on it now. As far as I'm concerned, police officers have expressed to me that sitting in my driveway would be one of the optimum places as far as, you know, traffic control, and I've offered, you know, to bring them coffee and donuts anytime that they do. But, you know, that's what needs to be done. And one more suggestion is that if they would do the peak hours at least one day a week and then rotate that day, so like maybe you do it Monday one week, and Tuesday the next week, and so forth, so that nobody gets wise to it, I think it'll have a really, a positive effect, you know? And, you know, I mean, it's a real safety issue, you know, is what we're dealing with there. And like I said, when that bridge goes in, you're going to have some really tragic accidents, I'm afraid, because the people that are doing this, and I can even tell you, I could even get you a license plate, because there are some people that are coming through it every day, and if they see any of the residents out there, they kind of like speed up for our benefit. So the only question I have is, are you all considering what you're going to do with this? Have you got any plans, and when might we know something?
So we, once public participation is done, we'll see if we can get an answer to that from our Director of Public Works for you.
Okay. All right, that's all I've got. Thank you.
Thank you. Next speaker card, please.
Tony Salvatore.
Real quick, Mayor Boland has used and continues to use the bully pulpit and city resources go after his opponents. I can attest to that. I believe that he has committed crimes in doing so. Case in point, last year this time, I ran for the Wildwood Ward 2 council position against Ward 2 Councilmember Ray Manten. Mr. Manten was backed by Mayor Boland and Mayor Boland's Political Action Committee. Mayor Boland, Councilmember Manten, former city manager Ryan Thomas, precinct captain Tanner, and with advice from city attorney John Young, conspired to oppress and intimidate me in the free exercise and enjoyment of my First Amendment right of free speech. Either directly or indirectly, they used the Wildwood City Police and legal resources to oppress and intimidate me and my campaign. You can see some of the police action against me by going to Facebook, Salvatore for Wildwood. According to former city administrator Ryan Thomas, city attorney John Young recommended that I be prosecuted for exercising my First Amendment right of free speech during my campaign. Let's see.
Can you go ahead and show the first one? I'll click it here.
Who okayed a special prosecutor? Who requested a special prosecutor?
Well, I had initially contacted the city attorney just to ask the question, what are we supposed to be doing here with this sign issue? And he had indicated that it's more of a prosecuting attorney issue to review. And so from there, my understanding is that the city attorney spoke to the prosecuting attorney, and then the police department provided their report to the prosecuting attorney.
Well, last time you told me that you talked to...
That was straight from former city-
what are we supposed to be doing here with this sign issue? And he had indicated that it's more of a prosecuting attorney issue to review. And, um, so from there, I, my understanding is that the city attorney spoke to the prosecuting attorney, and then the police department provided their report to the prosecuting attorney.
Well, last time you told me that you talked to, uh...
That was, that was straight from former, uh, City Ma- uh, Manager Ryan Thomas. Last year this time, disregard. Now, let's see how the conspiracy worked.
After numerous times of Mr. Manton calling you, and, uh, Councilman Manton calling you, and Mayor Boland calling you, telling you where I was located, and then asking you to call the police on me, which you did, called Captain Tanner, told him my location, and they would send police patrol cars out. And you said, after a while, you got tired of it, and you, uh, you told, uh, Councilman Manton basically handled it himself. Is that correct?
Yeah, I didn't feel it was, I needed to serve as a middleman. If he has a complaint, he can contact the police directly.
He had on the 30th of March, it was only three days prior to, uh, the election, uh, there was a call again from Wildwood City Hall down to the police department here, uh, the precinct. And it said that I was where I was, and to have patrol cars sent out there. I was, I was at Stricker and Curves Mill, and you had police cars sent out. Was that you who did that?
I don't remember. I don't think it would have been, but...
It came, okay, it came from Wildwood City Hall, and I'll, and I'm, I'm asking for more records, so I'll eventually get to it.
By the way, that was, uh, the city calling the police department as late as the 30th, uh, according to, uh, to, uh, records that I received. And Mayor Boland was implicitly involved in a lot of those calls. So, question for Mayor Boland and City Attorney John Young. Since you are both attorneys, have either of you ever studied the U.S. Constitution in law school? That's, I'd like to have that question answered after, afterwards. Question, questions for Councilmember Greg Nani, Councilmember McGowan, Councilmember Bartoni, Councilmember Shea, Councilmember Dillard, Councilmember Dodwell, Councilmember Taylor, Councilmember Bertoloni, and Council, uh, Member McCutcheon, Councilmember Bopp, Councilmember Jordan, Councilmember Stein, Councilmember Werther, Councilmember Garitano, and Councilmember Stevens. These are for you. When am I going to get...
So, Mr. Salvatore, you're, you're five. How much more do you have?
I don't have, that's not five minutes. I have a timer right here.
It is five minutes. How much more do you have?
Okay, I got another minute.
Okay.
When am I going to get an answer to my complaints against Mayor Boland, Councilmember Manton, and former City Administrator Ryan Thomas? Mr. Engelmeyer's responses, we now know that unlike City Prosecutor Molly Proust, who recused herself, are tainted, yes, Mr. Engelmeyer's responses are tainted, and he may have committed malpractice and, and not followed the code of conduct, and recused himself. As I see right now, maybe, maybe Mr. Young did the same thing, because evidently he gave the advice to have me prosecuted. Because he talked to Molly Proust regarding getting me prosecuted for using my First Amendment rights of free speech. Additionally, just real quick, all of you have now, have from St. Louis County, from St. Louis County, it says, "The St. Louis County Police Department will not enforce Wildwood ordinances 415, 420, and 415, 440 against Mr. Salvatore." Additionally, we have it from Mr. Young, it says, "The city will not enforce sections 415, 420, and 415, 440 of the Code of Ordinances of the City of Wildwood."
Mr. Salvatore, we're at that minute, so...
I guess, I guess, Mr. Salvatore, by the way, you used, you've been using the bully pu- uh, the bully pulpit, and this is also very illegal.
Mr. Salvatore, I'm going to have to ask you to wrap it up. I have to treat you just the same as everyone else.
One question. It says, if, right here it says, under USC Code, uh, District Code, "If two or more persons conspire to injure, oppress, threaten, or intimidate any person, any state, territory, Commonwealth possession, or district, free exercise or enjoyment of any right or privilege secured by the Constitution or laws of the United States, or because of his having so exercised the same, they shall be fined under the title or imprisoned not more than 10 years or both." That's, that's federal law. That's prosecutor should come after you, Mr. Boland, for these...
Okay. Mr. Salvatore, I'm going to have to ask you to wrap it up.
Disregard.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Next speaker card, please.
Don McLaughlin.
Don McLaughlin?
Don, not Dan. Um, I'm just here to endorse the, uh, cut through prohibition on Etherington Road. Uh, lived out here 23 years, and I'm on Orville Road, and it's always a, it's gotten to be a real, uh, challenge in the morning, trying to pull out and go onto Etherington Road, and a lot of people cutting through. Just last week, again, like another neighbor had somebody pass me. So that's all I had, was just, please help us out. Thank you.
Thank you. Next speaker card, please.
Bill Kennedy.
Bill Kennedy, Ward Six. I'm not related to the Hyannis Kennedys. I don't even like that family very much. I understand we came from the same area in Ireland a couple hundred years ago. But I do appreciate a lot that they've done. I appreciate some of the things they've said. In 1968, at the funeral for Bobby Kennedy, Ted Kennedy said this about his brother. "Where he saw wrong, he tried to right it." I was a freshman in college. I've never forgotten those words. I remember them all the time. Ms. Shea, where you saw wrong, you have tried to right it. Thank you. I know that's why you ran for office, because you were watching what was going on in this corrupt government since 2016. There's a censure motion brought by one of my favorite council members tonight. It deals with erratic threatening and unbecoming behavior, demeaning behavior, lack of decorum, disregard for the city's procedures, norms, and rules, and personal attacks and threats on other council members. It would be interesting if each of the council members who have felt that they were bullied, threatened, intimidated at some point by this mayor, would raise their hands right now. Wow, interesting. You should be censured. Using the same wording, these six council members who just raised their hands, and have said that you have bullied them, threatened them, intimidated them. If you censure Ms. Shea and not him, you're hypocrites. Let's talk about demeaning the office. Check this message. This is a message this mayor sent the residents of Ward Eight to mislead them about the charter proposition amendments and his chosen replacement for planning and zoning. Like a spoiled brat teenager who never grew up, he has put graffiti across our city logo. Does that demean the office of mayor? Does that create an adverse work environment in City Hall? How about you, Mr. Cross? You like to see that? How about you, Joe? Does that make you feel good about where you work? When the mayor does this to the city's official logo in the front of City Hall, you cannot censure Ms. Shea if you allow this corrupt mayor to continue what he's doing. You know, some people that you run across in life, and I've been in business, government, all kinds of social activities, some men, quote unquote, that you run across in life do not like strong women. When I look at Ms. Shea, when I look at Ms. Jordan, Kelly Werther, and a litany of other women who have stood up to this mayor, and have been crucified behind the scenes, and threatened and bullied by him, that's called misogynism.
Mr. Kennedy, how much more do you have?
I've got about five hours, but I'll wrap it up.
How much more do you have, Mr. Kennedy, precisely? How much more do you have?
I have 30 seconds.
Thank you.
Ms. Dodwell, we had breakfast with Sue Cullenane before you ran for office. You're better than this. David, before you leave, we talked at Starbucks. We talked about what it took to be a fair, honest consul person. He's better than this. Why he's contaminated? Katie, with all due respect, you're better than this. Thank you.
Thank you. Next speaker card, please.
Eric Tramain.
Trumain. Sorry.
Mayor Council, Eric Trumain, Ward One. Uh, the good news is that the Board of Public Safety has produced what I think is a wonderful bill and ordinance, uh, number 2448. This makes all the sense in the world. Uh, in Wildwood, we've been lucky. What we call Old Etherington in my neighborhood is Etherington that runs between Wild Horse Creek and 109. It's a lane and a half, maybe. It's got one, one lane bridge. It's got two blind corners and two blind hills. It has three other neighborhood roads that run into it. And it's a very dangerous place. Uh, dogs have been run over. Thank God, kids have not. We've been lucky. Uh, I'd say once a month, they're fishing some car out of the woods who, uh, thought they could get through there in a hurry and crash into the woods. Um, this ordinance is the first step in clearing that up, and it's very well done. It was well researched by the Board of Public Safety. Uh, I can tell you, everyone in my neighborhood is absolutely for it. Um, this will be a huge benefit to the neighborhood. It's going to help Wildwood as far as, uh, Wildwood as far as the safety goes. Now, the bad news. Tammy Shea has done more for Wildwood than almost anyone else in this room. Uh, to, to even think about censuring her is an absurdity. Uh, she was here in the beginning. She's been here every day since. She's been a strong voice for Wildwood. She should get an award.
Thank you. Next speaker card, please.
Jean Vedvig.
She had to leave. Thank you. Next speaker card, please.
Crystal McCoon.
Uh, Crystal McCoon, Ward Seven. Uh, there's a couple of things I'm up here to talk about tonight. Um, the first thing is the microphone. I'm getting a lot of, uh, text messages from Ward Seven. Uh, some of the elderly residents can't hear. This is going in and out on the livestream. So if somebody could look at that maybe, and see what the problem is, um, in the very beginning. I don't know how it is now. So if you guys can address that, that would be great for those residents. Um, the second thing that I want to bring up is my question about Ward, uh, what's going to be presented tonight under the appointments for Jeff Lovett for P&amp;Z, Ward Seven. Um, I sent an email today to Mr. Cross and Mr. Vunich. I wanted to inquire on the procedure of how certain things work and how, what type of rules or regulations, policies that you do. So, uh, Mr. Mayor, I guess this is directed at you. Um, I noticed on the agenda that was published on February 20th, there was a, one line that talked about an appointment or for planning and zoning Ward Seven with nobody's name. And it didn't have an attachment. So I had wrote to the city and said, hey, was this done an error? Were we missing a document? What was the problem? Uh, Mr. Vunich responded and said that nothing had been put forward. It wasn't a mistake, and he was still waiting to hear from you, Mr. Mayor. So Ward Seven is one of my big concerns. Um, I think it's important for representing, representing, uh, the ward that I represent from the Homeowners Association. And I'm a little disappointed that you could put a place marker on the agenda without naming somebody. Um, as I noticed on the agenda, and I would request that you update the agenda, it says it was posted Wednesday, February 20th of 2019. Your revisions to add Jeff Lovett's name is on here, but I think this needs to say amended, because it was done today at 12:50. And I received that email as well. So I think that throwing somebody's name into the mix at the last minute, um, was really unprofessional. Um, and failing to represent Ward Seven properly. Um, another thing is that Mr. Lovett was asked not too long ago about his possibility of running P&amp;Z. He was, explained that Mr. Archeski was involved, and Mr. Lovett responded, and the email stated that, oh, well, I didn't realize it was Rick's, uh, position. I fully support Rick, and I'm not going to run. Well, I don't know how he got in the mix tonight. So I don't know if Mr. Lovett had a change of heart, or what happened on that. But I, I, with all due respect with Mr. Lovett and the service he did serve for the city, I don't, I'm not voting in favor of this. Um, so I'd like to know from the city, I know this is, I'm going to ask a question, is what is the policy, policies, procedures, charter, whatever it is, and I guess this is for the attorney too, to answer for the public, is what is the procedure that the mayor should be following? Can you put a place marker on the agenda just to hold the spot so you don't lose it, and then come up with a name later? I, I'd like to know what that, that looks like, and supporting documentation that, um, shows that. So the last thing that I wanted to address is, again, I talked to Mr. Cross. Everybody's talking about IP, the abuse of IP. The IP's still wrong on the back of your board. The circle R is not for Wildwood. You don't have protection in that word. The circle R should be up with your little logo. Um, it hasn't been corrected. I've seen some literature that has. But I know you had a staff meeting. I'd like to follow up to what happened at that staff meeting. Did you guys contact your IP attorney to see what proper use is, and to see how you're inappropriately representing the city, because you don't have rights over the, the city of Wildwood? You do have your wonderful logo up above. So I would like to see that corrected, um, as it, it's an eyesore and it's, uh, improper. So that's all I have, and I would look forward to an answer to my questions. Thank you.
Thank you. Next speaker card, please.
Karen Jailing.
My name's Karen Jailing, Ward Three. Once again, I'm here, and I'm not comfortable, but I felt a need to clarify and put on record some information that was brought up at the end of the city council meeting held on February 11th, 2019. During the miscellaneous segment, Councilmember Shea brought up a topic that referenced me as, quote, "The resident that needs to hear this." She went on to say, "There was a project approval that I accused her of opposing dealing with the concession stand at St. Albans Church." This is not true. She knew before the meeting that she was going to bring this subject up, because at the end of the meeting, her husband, Dan McLaughlin, handed me this envelope with my name on it. In it was emails from Ms. Shea and Mr. Vunich. Her husband said this would prove that she had nothing to do with the project approval. I asked him what he was talking about, and he said that he had heard from a reliable neighbor that I had said she was the one to slow the project down. At the city council meeting, I spoke during the public participation and referenced that I asked Mr. Dillard to look into the St. Albans project. I never asked Ms. Shea or referenced her about this. Actually, I made a call to City Hall and got the answer I needed. I never said the project was slowed down. When Mr. McLaughlin handed me the envelope, he went on to say that it only spoke at the meeting, because I'm a friend of Dr. Rainey, who is running against his wife. This is not true. My comments about bullying, intimidation, and name-calling have nothing to do with the election. Actually, when someone is representing me and acts... Actually, when someone is representing me and acts this way, it's wrong and has no place in City Hall. I met Dr. Ramey here at city council meetings. I recognize him from our church. When he was nominated for the Board of Adjustments Committee, I listened as Ms. Shea praised him, and I quote her, "I support this appointment. This is the first time ever an appointee has ever offered that they have read the master plan, the plan of intent, and the charter." I commented to him that this has never happened, and he is ideally the perfect candidate just on that. I trust him. I believe he has the honest and understanding and reverence of what we stand for here in Wildwood. After getting to know him, I agreed with Ms. Shea. We, as a city, are very lucky to have someone as busy as Dr. Ramey, who is willing to be involved in the city. It was brought to my attention, and Dr. Ramey's, from someone in the Shea camp, that I'm his campaign manager. For the record, I am not. I attended the Ward 3 meeting last week. It was so nice to attend a meeting where there wasn't any tension in the air. It was almost comfortable. If this can happen in a ward meeting, it'd be nice to carry it over to the city council meetings. I noticed on the agenda that one of the items will be discussed is a resolution of censure of Councilmember Shea. I appreciate that some action is being taken. We need to make sure this kind of action does not happen again. I'll be interested how this vote goes. If you censor her, you are condemning the action. If you vote against the censor, you condone the action. Think about that. Thank you.
Thank you. Next speaker card. That's it? Okay. Oh, I'm sorry. One more speaker card.
Harry Lemay, Ward 5. First of all, I am thrilled that Clayton Road in front of Lafayette High School is starting to be repaired. That's been long on the books, and thanks, Mr. Harder, if you're here. We do appreciate it. Mine's going to be very short. I've heard a lot of diversionary comments tonight, starting with Mr. Taylor, Mr. Stein, Mr. Garantano, Mayor Boland. The censure on the table tonight is against one individual. It is not against all, so I would urge all of you to focus on the document there, not all of the other sidebars. So I will conclude. If you believe that that document is documented and truthful, you need to vote yes on censure. If you vote no, because I think there's a lot of evidence there, if you vote no, you're saying that's okay. Thank you.
Thank you. Next speaker card, please. No more? All right. Okay, thanks to each of you who took the time to participate in our public participation this evening. Before we move into the next item on the agenda, Rick, there was a question relative to your department, I believe, earlier. Would you like to provide an answer to that at this point?
Maybe someone can help me out with a question. I'm not sure I understood it, to be honest. I don't know if Mr. Irvin was aware of the background relative to this discussion at Board of Public Safety or not.
Councilmember Greg Notting.
Yeah, I'd be happy to help you out with that. What he was asking was whether or not there was going to be any kind of a movement towards having a resolution or a ordinance. He, I don't think Andy realized that there was actually one on the agenda. So, I mean, if he'd asked me, I'd address that.
Okay. Thank you. All right. Moving next into mayor announcements and appointments. Mr. Salvatore, it was stated in the preliminary remarks to the public participation that council members and the mayor, when asked a question, are not obligated to answer it, and if they do want to answer it, they can answer it this evening or at another time. So, Councilor Salvatore, I'm going to have to ask you to please not interrupt our meeting. Moving next to the appointments, we have two somewhat different. The first one is, I'm sorry, Councilmember Bertolino.
I'm sorry, Mr. Mayor. I wanted to follow up on what John said also because there was obviously some confusion. The Board of Public Safety is recommending, and it's on the agenda for this evening, that we put up restrictive turn signals, turn signs, I mean, on Etherton Road. You're shaking your head. Through traffic, right. I'm sorry, no, through traffic, to try and control this. We have a, Captain Mendel also will attest to this. We have a policing issue of this. I mean, how you, anything you put up, how do you police it? That's a concern. We're still working on that. But there is action being taken, and hopefully everyone understands it. We listen to the citizens on Etherton and Old O'Farrell, and we are taking action.
Thank you. Councilmember Stein.
I wanted to respond to some of the comments briefly.
So before you do that, let's make sure, was there any question directed to Councilmember Stein? It only applies, we respond to questions, so.
Yeah, he can answer Mr. Salvatore's question, I guess.
I don't recall a question. All right. Moving into appointments, we have two. They're somewhat different, actually. The first one relates to the Ward 7 commissioner position to planning and zoning, and this evening, I'm honored to nominate or to appoint Mr. Jeff Levitt. As you know, he is a former council member from Ward 7. He was on the council for five years, served in several capacities on various committees and so forth. This is also the fourth approach I'm making here to try to reach consensus in terms of this position, and so if you have any questions, I'm happy to answer them. Otherwise, I would entertain a motion to approve the appointment. May I have Councilmember McGowan, is there a second to the motion to approve the appointment? May I have Councilmember Manten? Any discussion on, and he is with us here this evening, any discussion on the motion? Councilor Werther.
I've got several statements to make with regards to this particular matter. Councilmembers, as you know, residents, as you may know, this is, continues to be a matter of political fodder for the mayor, rather than agreeing to what's best and what's recommended by both members of Ward 7, by the incoming member of Ward 7 for council, as well as many members of the public. Mr. Archeski should be the person being reappointed this evening, not Mr. Levitt. Mr. Archeski has the experience, and we're not talking about years of experience. We're talking about expertise in terms of dealing with MSD. He still works at the U.S. Army Corps of Engineers, as I understand. So he has intimate knowledge of what the EPA requirements are. He's served the city well in a number of capacities. He's an outstanding member of this community. There's absolutely no reason he should not be reappointed here for this position. Now, with regard to Mr. Levitt, Ms. McCoon brought it up earlier. About two weeks ago, yeah, two weeks ago or so, Mr. Levitt inquired of Mr. Stein and I about serving in some capacity within the city. And in particular, he did inquire about P&amp;Z, and I know Mr. Levitt's sitting over here to the side, so he can respond to it if he'd like. The fact of the matter is, among the back and forth, he indicated that he had talked with Mr. Stein. I replied via email and told him, I said, hey, Greg and I have been working tirelessly to try and get Mr. Archeski reappointed. It's important that he represents the ward and represents the city. Jeff's response to me on February 5th was, thanks, Tim. I spoke to Greg also. I did not understand until after I wrote you that Rick stays in position until replaced. That is, that's capital I-S, is different than there being an opening. His last sentence, I am not seeking the position. So council members, please do not acquiesce. Do what's best for the Ward 7. Do what's best for the city, and vote against this particular appointment, and let's move forward and get Mr. Archeski reappointed to P&amp;Z.
Councilor Taylor.
Thank you. I'd like to say that I wanted to thank Ms. Cheryl Jordan, John Boeb, for voting their conscience on this and standing up for what they believe in. And I know that both members have taken some political heat on that and some heat, and I think that you have served your constituents well in standing for what you believe in. I have communicated with various members that I have regular communication with that I have decided that it is, it is time to move on. I've received and reviewed about 50 emails in support of Mr. Levitt, a phenomenal amount. I do believe that the mayor appoints and the council approves. I just believe that, as a city, we do need to move on, and I will be supporting Mr. Levitt.
Councilor Shea.
My comments and potentially a question are really more relative to the continued narrative that we heard, we still hear, and we heard, actually, tonight from a resident regarding the actual verbiage of the amendment that was passed. And at the Ward 6 council meeting, it was, you know, obviously the center of the mayor's comments with regard to what the interpretation of that amendment is. And I only bring this up because I think that while some people that voted on this could say that they didn't understand that portion of it fair enough, I mean, sometimes the ballot language can be long, and, you know, you want to get in and out and understand that. However, it is the amended language that was approved, which, at the very last sentence, however, no time of service resulting from an appointment made prior to April 3rd, 2018, or service of less than a full term shall be counted. And that's relevant because we are being told that the intention of the voters was one thing, and then the plain text language of the amendment is obviously saying something else. And I bring this up in the context of the other set of limits that we have, which are applied to elected officials. A very similar provision exists. And if we're going to operate on the intention versus the letter, then I'm here to tell you that Ms. Katie Dodwell's candidacy is in jeopardy. Now, I don't think it is. She and I have talked about this. She has cleared it with the city attorney, that she is also termed out of her council position and has filed for the seat of Ward 4 again. Now, under the old rules, you do the eight years, and you're supposed to sit two out. The language doesn't speak to that, so she's not held to the two-out timeout period, okay? And if you were to go with the intent, of the old rules, she should. Doesn't say that, but if we're going to have this movable standard of intent versus what it says, then we set ourselves up for legal jeopardy, and it further confuses the matter. And I think what we ought to be doing as elected officials and as candidates and as appointees is seek to provide clarity on this language, not add to the confusion. I'm not targeting you, Ms. Dodwell. This is just an example. I firmly believe that you're qualified under the law to, but if we are to interpret the mayor's interpretation, he should be arguing for you to abandon your campaign because the intent was that you are supposed to term out at the end of your term. So you see where this gets to be very problematic. There's only one pathway out of here, and that's to read the letter of the law. And what you believe the intention is not what the law is. So your belief cannot supersede the intention. This movable standard has gotten us into more arguments up here than you can count, and it's unfortunate. You cannot, and, you know, quite frankly, after hearing some of the comments, you know, one of the reasons I even wanted to be here in 2017 is I firmly believe the rules are fine if they're applied equally. And I have a particular personal aversion to a movable standard that allows them to be applied to some and not to others. And we do ourselves and this community and every one of you a disservice when we don't apply the rules evenly. That's not asking a lot in a city that prides itself on a great set of ordinances, a great master plan, a great charter cultivated with citizen input and citizen interest. So I would like to ask the city attorney, once again, on record, to interpret the amended charter amendment that was passed on appointments and explain to this crowd and explain to the appointees and anybody else that cares to listen what the rule is, please.
The charter amendment as amendment does not prohibit a reappointment of someone who, prior to the election of 2018, served more than eight years.
So Ms. Dodwell's candidacy is legitimate under a similar provision, correct? Ms. Dodwell's candidacy is legitimate under the similar provision for the amendment that was passed for elected officials.
I don't believe that the charter provision prohibits Ms. Dodwell from running for office.
Okay. So, all things being equal, we apply it to her, we should apply it to everybody else, and Rick Archeski is not exempt. He should not be treated any differently. He's qualified, and up until just tonight, we had full support for him. Thank you.
Councilor Shea, I think you raised a very good point relative to equal application, and this is something, you were at the Ward 6 meeting, and you heard me mention it, and I'll mention it here. While the ballot measures that the residents of our city passed by 70-plus percent both provide term limits of eight years, they both state that, one is for elected officials, one is for appointed officials. They both state that service prior to the time of passage does not count toward, this is the distinction you're making, does not count toward the term limits technically. The difference between the two is, in my opinion, this. With respect to appointments, our residents do not have the choice to change their mind as to a candidate. You mentioned Councilmember Dodwell. Only the mayor and the council have the ability to make appointments. Our residents can't, can't say to themselves and take action on someone that has been in an appointed position that they may want to see stay or not. That is solely within the purview of the mayor and the council. However, with the other provision relating to elected officials, the voters have the right and the ability and the power, when they go to the ballot box, to change their opinion as to an elected official, and they may very well do that. That is the distinction. Councilmember Werther.
Come back to me, please.
Councilmember Greg Notting.
Thank you. I think that if we don't have any other sincere thing to do, it's education of the public about what your government can and cannot do. I think Ms. Shea just did a great job of explaining to you where the law stands relative to the charter amendment that you all passed last April. Let me just say this. I was the guy who brought forward the limitations for elected officials. I asked the then Charter Commission to consider that. I didn't ask them to regulate members of boards and commissions. Mr. Manten, I believe, brought that recommendation forward to the Charter Commission. I was a little bit squeamish about them doing that, and I'll tell you why. Although I'd like to see new people involved at various points, and there have been a number of new people involved at various points, we don't get that many requests on a regular basis, and the problem is that if you've never been involved in doing some of these things before, you really have a learning curve to deal with, and replacing everybody on a board or commission can be a disaster if you get rid of everybody at one time. I'm not speaking here to one individual in particular. I'm speaking generically about the situation that you're confronted with. Let me give you an example of what I mean. The Architectural Review Board requires that you have to be a licensed architect. Do you know how many licensed architects live in the city of Wildwood? Not many. So if we limit them, suddenly we find ourselves with nobody on the Architectural Review Board. When it comes to people on planning and zoning, I can tell you for a fact that what you have to learn to be able to comprehend what's involved in the master plan, the various ordinances that deal with planning and zoning require a great deal of time to be able to do that. So replacing people a little bit at a time is a practical thing, and in fact, the mayor has done that. He's put some new people, we've put new people on planning and zoning, but at this juncture, if he does what he wants to do, we'll get rid of everybody that's been there for a while all at once, which is a disaster. And these people protect us from what happens out there that some of you don't like, like cutting down all the trees and the various developments and what have you and so forth. So the bottom line is, you know, we can't afford the pleasure of just dumping everybody off of board or commission when we feel like it because we just think it's not fair anymore. That's not... That's not the way it works. So I would remind you that I think that the ruling that was passed, the amendment that we were asked to pass regarding boards and commissions, was probably not a very good idea. And because I was busy running for this position last year, because my friends asked me to do that, I didn't have time to go out and educate some of you relative to that particular charter amendment, and I apologize for that personally because I didn't spend as much time educating people as I should have. Here's a suggestion. You guys ask us to put up an amendment for you to pass the next time to get rid of that amendment relative to boards and commissions, but keep the ones for the politicians. Throw us out of here after eight years, and don't let us come back. That's a fact. Thank you.
Councilor Stevens.
Yeah, I just had some concerns how this is being handled by Mayor Boland. Rick Archeski's not a politician. You know, he's a volunteer. He's been a dedicated volunteer for many years here in the city of Wildwood, and I don't think that he should be treated as a politician. Currently, the mayor is sending emails out to Ward 8 residents telling them that basically he's called... Mr. Archeski, he doesn't use his name, he just calls him "The Holdover." And he says, "The Holdover," you know, basically won't get out of office. And he also complains to residents about his votes on signs and his votes on PRDs. And I don't think Mr. Archeski deserves that from the mayor. He's not getting paid for his volunteer work on the Planning and Zoning Commission. He's not a politician. I'm a politician. If you want to come after me, come on, let's do it. But for a dedicated volunteer like Mr. Archeski, I don't think he should be treated that way. Also, Mr. Mayor is right. Only we, up on here in council, can take action, and that is correct. So council did take action. We passed a resolution. It's 2018-34. It's a resolution by the City Council of Wildwood encouraging the mayor to reappoint Rick Archeski. Okay? So council has taken action. This appointment doesn't have to be this political. We can move on from this, but we're just waiting on the mayor to help us move on from this and to reappoint Mr. Archeski. And Mr. Taylor, you're wrong in one regard. You are getting emails, but the emails were not in support of Mr. Levitt. They were only against Rick Archeski, okay? Mr. Levitt didn't put his name forth until the 11th hour here. I went all weekend not knowing who was going to be up here tonight. So none of this was for Jeff Levitt. This was all against Rick Archeski, and that's just too bad because we do have a lot of new members on Planning and Zoning already. The member from Ward 8, that represents us here for Ward 8, I think he got on there in middle, late 2016. That's not a lot of time for planning and zoning. It takes a while to get your feet underneath you on planning and zoning, so he's a relatively new member. Cindy Doppler's a new member. I voted in favor for her. So I support new members. Carol Simpson is a new member. I voted in favor of her. So there's no problem with putting new people on when their terms are up, but Mr. Archeski's term is not up. He's the most experienced, the most dedicated volunteer that we have on planning and zoning, and that's why I support him. I'm not voting against Jeff Levitt, all right? I'm voting for Rick Archeski. So I don't support Mr. Levitt, but I would love to have the mayor follow Resolution 2018-34. 12 members of council voted in favor of it. Every member from Ward 1, every member from Ward 3, Ward 4, Ward 6, 7, and 8. We had unanimous support from all of these wards in favor of Mr. Archeski. And I just really hope that we can move past this, and at the next meeting, we can get Mr. Archeski put back onto the Planning and Zoning Commission.
For clarification, Councilmember Stevens, the resolutions simply ask that he be considered for the position.
Yes, please consider it.
Not that he be reappointed. Councilor Bertolino.
Jeff, do you mind coming up to the podium? Thank you, Jeff. Do we look different from that side looking up here?
A lot.
Thank you. Okay. Better, I hope. One question, Jeff, but knowing everything that you do know about this situation, do you want to be on Planning and Zoning?
Yes, I do.
And can you tell me why?
From the time I left City Council... Pardon my voice, as you can tell, it hasn't gotten better since I left. I've looked for an opportunity to give back to the city, and this seems like a good opportunity. I believe my experience on City Council puts me ahead of the curve of someone new to planning and zoning like a lot of people would be. I would also make one more comment that, just as Councilmember Stevens said, that you differentiated a vote against Rick versus a vote for me. I believe Rick has done a wonderful job for the city, and I'm not running as a vote against him. I just believe I can do a good job as well.
Councilor Taylor.
Yes, Mr. Stevens, thank you for your comments. I really do appreciate the distinction between voting for and voting against. I remember 2018-34, the resolution, non-binding, that encouraged the mayor to consider appointing Archeski. I was the person who made that motion. And I, as I said, I definitely want to commend Councilwoman Jordan, Councilman Boe for their positions and their voting in the interest. I don't know how they're going to vote on this, but I just do believe, given the amount of support for finding someone else, given the qualifications of this individual, given the amount... I just, I think we're deadlocked. I just don't think... I think it's time for the city to move forward. I very much appreciate Mr. Archeski's service. And I also would like to say this. I'm not voting this way because I think, and there's been any change in the law. I always, I believe it's within the purview of the mayor to make a nomination, and it's within the purview of the council to approve or not. And up to this point, I have not been approving for a variety of reasons. But I think it's been 10 months now, and this cycling in of new people, there's 10 more months of experience for some of those who were brought in before. And I also believe that Mr. Levitt has the experience. And on balance, I just believe, given the amount of deadlock we have here, that I think it's best for the city if we move forward. So I didn't want to sandbag anyone. I believe I called you and let you know that I was reconsidering my position. I called other people who are receptive to such calls to let them know. Some individuals are not receptive of calls, but I let those who are interested in hearing my opinion know. And it is something that I've considered, and I think we all need to vote our conscience on this. And I respect your vote. I definitely respect the stance of the two council members that I mentioned. I think they have really fought the fight for their principles, and I have been behind them on that, but given the considerations as they stand now, this is my position. But thank you for that clarification, Mr. Stevens.
Councilor Werther.
And for taking my phone call.
Thank you. Mr. Levitt, do you mind coming back up to the microphone, please? I have to ask the question after the email exchange you and I had. You clearly stated, "I am not seeking the position." Why?
Why I changed, or why I wrote that?
Explain why.
Once again, why I changed, or why I wrote that?
You answered the question. How you want to answer it, if it's why you changed, why you think, why this, why that, just why. Because it's pretty clear right here.
Because I believe I'd be a good candidate, and I believe I can do a good job in that position.
But you said you weren't seeking the position on the 5th.
That's correct.
Okay. Thank you. Mr. Taylor, with regards to your comments, it's interesting. I don't know if... Did he reach out to you, Mr. Stein? On this? Mr. Taylor?
I saw his post on Facebook.
You saw his post on Facebook? Okay. All right. Interesting, I didn't get the call.
Oh.
But that's... Ah, no. Hold on, let me finish. The fact of the matter remains that we continue to lose valuable experience at planning and zoning. Mr. Gregg Nani, Councilmember Gregg Nani, Dr. Gregg Nani stated it pretty clearly. We've had a cycle of new people through. We've actually had Mr. Boe, who was a long-term member of Planning and Zoning, come to the city council. At that time, I voted against that. Why? Because we were diluting the experience at planning and zoning. It's clear that the first line of defense in this city is planning and zoning. Without that, everyone who's concerned about density and other things, you'll see it go away. Because developers have the time, they have the money, they have the words to bring forward and fool people. That's the only way I can plainly make it, make the case. So am I voting against Mr. Levitt, or will I vote against Mr. Levitt? No. I'll vote for Mr. Archeski. I have been, since I brought this to this council's attention last June. It should continue to be that way. And council members, you know this. You've been here long enough. Mr. Levitt knows this, that planning and zoning is the first line of defense. And as a result, the best person for the job is in the audience. That's Mr. Rick Archeski.
Are you good?
I'm good.
Okay. So we'll do a roll call vote, and for clarification, a yes vote is to approve the appointment of former councilmember Jeff Levitt.
Councilmember Gregg Nani?
No.
Councilmember McGowan?
Yes.
Councilmember Bartoni?
Yes.
Councilmember Manton?
Yes.
Councilmember Shea?
No.
Councilmember Dillard?
No.
Councilmember Dodwell?
Abstained.
Councilmember Taylor?
Yes.
Councilmember Bertolino?
Yes.
Councilmember McCutcheon?
Yes.
Councilmember Boe?
No.
Councilmember Jordan?
No.
Councilmember Stein?
Please come back around to me.
Councilmember Werther?
No.
Councilmember Giratano?
Yes.
Councilmember Stevens?
No.
Councilmember Stein?
That's true.
We have eight yes, seven no, and one abstained.
So the motion fails. Thank you for being here this evening, Mr. Levitt. Appreciate it. Moving next, under appointments, is the Wildwood Preservation Commission. As I mentioned to you, members of the council, and as you heard from Councilmember Harder this evening, this is a fluid situation, and it is something that frankly, we do not know where it will go. And I think that it is important, as I believe one of you pointed out earlier, that we be proactive and look out for the interests of our residents in this city. And so what I'm proposing is the formation of a commission. It'll be composed of a representative from each ward, along with two council members, and the purpose of the commission will be... I have you. The purpose of the commission will be twofold. Not to engage in the debate of the matter of the merger, but rather, first of all, to identify our key value assets in this city, our topography, watersheds, highway systems, and so forth, things that our residents value, and to prioritize those. And then secondly, to set about making recommendations for the council as to how we can make it very difficult, if not impossible, for any resulting St. Louis County or state agency to affect those. So that is the background on it, and with that background in mind, I would entertain a motion to form the commission, made by Councilmember Dodwell, seconded by Councilmember Manton. And I would just mention that if this is approved, then at the next council meeting, I would put forth a list of appointees. Councilmember Gregg Nani.
Yeah, I don't have a problem with obviously opposing the proposed merger. I think that what Mr. Harder said tonight is absolutely true. And I think it doesn't matter whether you catalog our assets or not. If they win this, our assets will mean nothing because they're going to take over our planning and zoning, which is unacceptable. I don't know that forming a commission specifically to deal with cataloging assets, which have already been cataloged, and I believe Mr. Vunich will back this up in our master plan and other places, our town center plan, we already have done that. We've done that for 20-plus years. When we farm a city, we catalog the assets of the city. What we need are people who will take the lead in going out and getting signatures from the residents to present to the folks that are trying to get this done, telling them that we don't want it, and coordinating an effort to work with all the other cities and agencies that are trying to oppose this merger. And that's what we really need to zero in on. So I don't know that we need to spend a lot of time and waste a lot of energy cataloging something we've already cataloged. We need action, and we need it now. And I'd just be a little lighthearted in the view of all the things that have been said tonight. I'm starting a new group. It's called Worse With You, so if you want to join me, you can.
Councilmember Taylor? Do I see your hand?
Yeah.
Councilmember Taylor.
Well, I agree we need action. I mean, the signatures, the petitions. I also believe that the rural regions are going to be critical in this, but we need to get everything we can in St. Louis County. But my major concern is the $25 million they're going to be spending in the outstate as well. But I don't see why it's mutually exclusive. I think all those efforts are going to go forward. The Castle Keep concept of worst-case scenario, that we're so massively outspent, and maybe some anti-Kansas City, anti-St. Louis sentiment kicks in, that they just stick it to us outstate, that we should have a fallback. And my understanding of this is that we wouldn't only be cataloging assets, but this committee, commission, would also be proposing legislation and certain other fixes in case the unthinkable happens and we fail in the mission, and that we can try to find some ways to protect our waterways and certain things that make Wildwood Wildwood. We want to keep Wildwood Wildwood. We got the best defense, it's a strong offense. That said, if there is a worst-case scenario, I don't see the harm in dedicating the efforts of several citizens and several council people to be looking at some fallback positions. I think it only makes sense to have a fallback.
Councilor Werther.
Thank you. While I think the intention is good, the comments, both by Dr. Councilmember Gregg Nani, Mr. Taylor, indicate there are different thoughts on what this should actually be and do. As a result, I think I'd like to recommend and make a motion that this get moved to the Admin Public Works Committee, so that a clear definition of the purpose of this Ad hoc Wildwood Preservation Commission is defined, and then actions appropriately taken. We talked before, somebody mentioned before, about actionable items, tasks, and so forth. This would be the perfect opportunity to go ahead and do just that. So that's my motion.
So there is a motion to refer to Admin Public Works Committee. Is there a second to the motion? Seconded by Councilmember Dodwell? I'm sorry, you second the motion?
Yes, I'm seconding the motion.
Okay. So the motion on the floor at the moment is the motion to refer. That's the discussion. Any discussion on the motion to refer? Councilmember Dodwell.
Thank you.
I have you. Are you on the motion to refer? I have you on the main motion. Well, as it can be, your resident.
I'll wait, that's fine.
Councilmember Dodwell, go ahead.
I'm so sorry. Just relax.
Go ahead, Councilmember Dodwell. Get Councilor Shea next.
I just wanted to make sure that you understood that who Ward 4 is bringing before you, has been a previous council member, is very interested in making sure that while we catalog things and we do get alternative options put together, that we do everything in our power to move forward with making sure this doesn't happen at all. And so I think we need to have some component of that be part of this committee so that they do not... "do not" is the wrong text, but so that they are able to express their concerns, and then we can take some of that information and share that with the rest of the community. I think we have some very knowledgeable people, from what I've heard from other council members, that are going to be joining this particular members, that are going to be joining this particular committee, and so I want to make sure all the information gets out to the residents as quickly as possible, so that we know how to fight this, and the citizens know what the news feeds are and really aren't saying about all of this. So I just want to make sure that we put some guidelines down on paper for this commission.
Councilwoman Shay?
So, Rick, when's the next scheduled admin meeting?
Oh, wait until Tuesday.
Okay, so it's coming up fast, that's good, good. Yeah, I would only add, to amplify what you suggested, Katie, is that one of the comments we heard at the Ward Three meeting was the name of this commission didn't sound proactive enough, so we can talk about that. But in terms of actionable items, I think part of the agenda for this committee should include petition, signature, collection. I know that doesn't sound attractive to a lot of people.
The city can't spend its resources gaining petition signatures.
That's correct, you're right. But Mr. Harder stood here at the podium and suggested that that needed to happen. You're correct, I stand corrected, that we cannot advocate for that. But I think that there, the value of this, the way I see this as the value, is that there are a number of people concerned about this, and that's very good. And a place for those people to plug into this process is really a great thing, because there's nothing more frustrating than to feel like something's coming at you and you have no authority, or you're waiting on a slow council to do something. So I think on that regard, it's a very effective tool to engage. So we have to, we're going to have to get creative about how we're going to engage people and give them actionable items. So to your point, I think sending this to admin is a good place to have that discussion. And thank you for the correction, Mayor.
That's right, thank you. Councilman Bertolino?
Yeah, very quickly, yeah, thank you, Jim. My question, my concern was timing, and since we are going to be able, the Admin Public Works will meet before the next council meeting?
Actually, Tuesday night.
Tuesday night, what's the next council meeting?
Not until last night.
Until the following week after that, right?
Yeah.
Okay, so we've got time, thank you.
Councilman McGowan?
I just think this particular topic is so important to the city on a citywide basis, that it really deserves, quite frankly, more attention given to it than just sending it to the Admin Public Works Committee. I think it ought to be something that we decide to move ahead with on a sooner rather than later basis, and then leave it up to this group of individuals who are, have indicated a willingness to help represent the city as a whole in taking a serious, hard look at this, and I think they're going to come up with some excellent suggestions for us to buy into.
Councilmember Dodwell? I'm sorry, Councilman Bartoni, and then Councilmember Dodwell?
Thank you, and before I get to my first question, since we can't use resources towards getting signatures, would we be able to use volunteers? I mean, that's not really city resources, but just a question because I don't know the answer.
Anyone not affiliated with the city, at the city, in terms of the city directing it, if they are paying for it, if our residents want to collect signatures, they can certainly do that, and that's what I think Councilman Harder was alluding to tonight.
Okay. The reason I raised my hand originally, and I'm not necessarily against this going to Admin Public Works, but I don't understand necessarily what the purpose of that is, you know, if the, you know, if the ad hoc committee can get together and start talking about it and not, you know, I don't know if we have to over, like, over-manage it, let them do their job, they're going to come back to us anyway. I guess I just need some explanation as to why that's a good idea or a better idea than just to form this committee.
Councilmember Dodwell?
That was part of my reason that I raised my hand. I'm sorry, guys, I'm moving so slow, I've got a bad cold that I picked up from my three-year-old grandchildren, so, thanks, kids. But I think the goal would be, it goes to admin and public works. We identify some key concerns as a council that we have, that we can then share with that committee. Is that where you were headed, Tim?
Forgive me for speaking out of order, but it's in response. We've heard a couple of different suggestions and additional items to add to this committee's work, and so obviously, we have a great body of knowledge here, we all have particular concerns and outlooks. Some believe, you know, maybe there should be a volunteer group within, as part of this commission, that goes out and is involved in circulating petitions, who knows? But I think those things need to be defined, and that's the whole purpose of putting this back to the Admin Public Works, to define those items, make it, make sure it's coalesced around those key action items, and then go ahead and go out and take steps to make sure these things are done.
Yeah, the goal was not to take over the role of that commission, I think it was to clearly define, from a council perspective, in addition to the mayor's perspective, what we were concerned with, and ensure that that information got passed on to this committee, and then they can set their specific charges and steps that they're going to take and report back to council on how they're doing.
Councilor Garitano?
From what I'm hearing, and I believe that time is of the essence with this topic here regarding the merger, and I appreciate there's a motion to refer to the committee, but what I would like to offer is an amendment to the motion, where we still go ahead and go forward with the appointment, if there are no objections, but still then define what the scope is in the Admin Public Works meeting, when we meet on March 5th, and that way, we'll be able to move a lot faster rather than having to come back here. Because I think, you know, I haven't heard any comment regarding those that are being appointed to this commission here. So, what's that? No, so, well, then, I guess we'll, you know, good point. So maybe...
Okay, so, that's right. So Councilman Garitano, if you want to make a motion to the effect that you stated, which was that the council have the opportunity to approve of the formation of this commission, and that the Admin Public Works Committee develop the standards that was, that had been discussed, I think procedurally, the way to do that would be to vote down the motion to refer, and once this is approved, then make a motion to do exactly that by the Admin Public Works Committee, and that would be on the floor.
I think it's important that we take action. I've heard tonight, and I've heard it from residents, that when they look at the paper or read the news, they read Chesterfield's doing this, Aliceville's doing this, and what is Wildwood doing? We're not talking about the merger, although now we are. So let's take some bold actions. Let's approve the formation of this group here. We will then move forward with Admin Public Works, coming up with a good scope for this group, and then fill those roles.
Councilmember Greg Noni?
Yeah, I agree with everything that's been said, and I think Mr. Garitano has a good point, but we do need to move ahead, and because this body tends to move slowly with our processes, I think that we need to approve the formation of the committee tonight. Some people need to be sought that would be on this commission or committee for approval, while it goes to Admin Public Works to outline a process that they will be involved in to take this out on the streets, if you will, to get the job done. And I think that we can get that better done in Admin Public Works, because we're a smaller body, and we have a tendency to agree pretty heavily on what we want, and we can bring that recommendation back to this group as a whole. But if we have already made some moves to get the commission started and to start looking for some people to be on this committee, or whatever you want to call it, then I think it's probably worth that effort.
Councilmember Manten?
Yeah, so just a point of clarification, it's my understanding when this is referred to the Admin and Public Works Committee, once, if the commission is approved, you know, they'll be working concurrently with one another, not waiting this commission?
That's correct.
Okay, good, thank you.
Councilmember Werther?
Yeah, I'll go ahead and I'll make, modify my initial motion, and to refer, to go ahead and approve the formation of Ad hoc Wildwood Preservation Committee.
I don't think that's within the scope of a motion to refer, we just, we just need to vote that down, and then it'll come back to the main motion of forming it, and you approve that.
But hear me out, please, okay? I'm making, amending my motion, since I made the motion to refer, bless you. Do you need some water? Okay, okay. The, since I made the motion to refer, I want to amend that motion, to go ahead and still refer to the Admin Public Works, but go ahead and this, have this council approve the formation of that committee. That's exactly what you're saying. So I don't see what the deal, what's the difference?
Well, the main motion on the floor, I'm trying to, I'll explain it. The main motion on the floor is to approve the formation of the committee. A motion to refer takes precedence and supersedes the main motion, and so if the motion to refer, as you've, you made it, is passed, then that takes care of the main motion, it's not, it's no longer before the council, it would be before the Admin Public Works. So I know what you're trying to accomplish, and I'm just trying to help you, the way to do it is to vote against the motion to refer, the main motion to form the committee comes back, and then another motion is made, as Councilmember Garitano and others have talked about.
Hence the reason I've been trying to modify my motion, to go ahead and do exactly that. All in one fell swoop.
City Attorney?
Yeah, just procedurally, those are two very distinct motions, they should be handled separately.
Thank you. Councilmember McCutcheon?
I totally agree with Councilmember McGowan and Bartoni. Typically, when we have a committee or an ad hoc commission or whatever, we let that commission decide what their structure's going to be and what their points are going to be. We get citizen participation through this commission, which is extremely important. We're Wildwood, we want input from our residents. If councilmembers sit here and make the structure and the details, then we're participating in that commission. That commission is of Wildwood residents, not all councilmembers.
Councilwoman Shay?
I thought this was going to have councilmembers as part of it.
It is, two.
Okay, so, so just to, look, no one's trying to take over the ad hoc committee. It's going to be a combined effort. One of the values of having a little guidance on the front end through the committee, and I'm fine with approving the committee, or the ad hoc committee, through the admin committee, would be, you know, a little more experienced hand, a little more clarity when you get these people together, if you have a large contingency of residents who aren't familiar with these processes, there could be a ramp-up of education and knowledge that I think will serve them very well, and there will be this coordination, sort of a framework for it in advance, there's no harm in that, there's no harm. It's not, we're talking about meeting next week, it's going to be done before, the recommendation will probably be done before we meet again. So I see no real harm in just approving the committee and sending it to admin for refinement before, it's not a takeover, don't characterize it that way.
Okay, so the motion on the floor is to refer, show of hands, all in favor of the motion to refer the formation of this committee, please raise your hand. One, two, three, four. So the motion, so a yes vote is to refer, and we will not be coming back to the main motion to form, it'll be at, within the jurisdiction of Admin PW. Great, okay, so if this, if the motion to, Councilmember Shay, the motion, I'm sorry, Councilmember Dodwell, the motion is to refer, and it is to refer the main motion. So if this motion passes, we will not come, the council will not have the main motion before it to form the committee, it'll be within the purview of Admin Public Works. That is the motion. City Attorney, is that not the motion?
That is correct.
Thank you. So the motion is to refer the formation of, Councilmember Werther?
Yeah, the reality is, Admin Public Works gets its hands on it, gets the opportunity to provide details and their input, and set some guidelines, no, I say guidelines, set some task action items that we all agree up to. Ultimately, it ends up right back here, the very next week.
Thank you. Okay, so the vote is on the motion to refer, which will take them, the council, if this passes, will not be deciding whether to form this commission. Let's do a roll call vote. Councilmember Greg Noni?
I'm not sure if I understand exactly what we're voting on.
You're voting on a motion to refer the main motion, so the main motion is to form the commission, and if the motion to refer passes, that takes care of the main motion, the council will not, it'll go to the Admin Public Works Committee, and the council will not be voting tonight on whether to form the commission. Motion to refer takes care of the main motion, takes it off the table, it's no longer in the purview of the council. So this, any further questions on the, so, roll call vote on the motion to refer, please.
Councilmember McGowan?
No.
Councilmember Bartoni?
No.
Councilmember Manten?
No.
Councilmember Shay?
No.
Councilmember Dillard?
No.
Councilmember Dodwell?
No.
Councilmember Taylor?
Nope.
Councilmember Bertolino?
No.
Councilmember McCutcheon?
No.
Councilmember Boe?
No.
Councilmember Jordan?
No.
Councilmember Stein?
Yes.
Councilmember Werther?
Aye.
Councilmember Garitano?
No.
Councilmember Stevens?
No.
Councilmember Greg Noni?
No.
Okay, so the motion to refer fails, so now the main motion to form the ad hoc commission as provided is back on the floor for a decision by the council. Councilmember Taylor?
At this point, would it be okay to do what Mr. Garitano had suggested?
You could do that, you could amend the motion, the main motion to provide that concomitant with the formation, the, concomitant with the
Right.
...commission being approved, that the Admin Public Works Committee would develop information and standards and direction for...
Okay, so what I would like to do in plainer language is, let's form the commission, I make a motion that we form the commission...
That's already on the floor.
And concurrent with that, we refer to the Admin and Public Works to determine the... Well, it is, but this, well, right, right.
So I'm taking your motion, which is to amend the main motion to have the Admin PW Committee develop the information...
And I believe we can do that, because now, yeah, on the main motion.
Okay. Is there a second to the amendment made by Councilman Garitano? So now the discussion is on the amendment to the main motion only, any discussion on the amendment? All in favor of the amendment, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? We have one opposed, Councilmember McCutcheon, is that correct?
Yes.
Okay, any other opposed? Any abstentions? Okay, motion carries. So now we're back to the main motion, which is to form the commission as amended by the council with that last motion. Any further discussion? Roll call vote, please. I'm sorry.
I'm sorry, so, clarification. So, it sounds really familiar, but we are moving to form the committee and to send it to admin?
No, you are voting to form the committee and to request Admin Public Works develop the procedures, information, objectives, and so forth, that...
Okay, same thing, it's going to admin, we're going to be talking about it at admin and come back with our...
You will be talking about the subject at admin, but it will be formed, and you will have appointees at the next meeting. Roll call vote, please. This is to, a yes vote is to form the commission, just in case there's any discrepancy of that.
Councilmember Bartoni?
Yes.
Councilmember Manten?
Yes.
Councilmember Shay?
Yes.
Councilmember Dillard?
Yes.
Councilmember Dodwell?
Yes.
Councilmember Taylor?
Yes.
Councilmember Bertolino?
Yes.
Councilmember McCutcheon?
Yes.
Councilmember Boe?
Yes.
Councilmember Jordan?
Yes.
Councilmember Stein?
Yes.
Councilmember Werther?
Aye.
Councilmember Garitano?
Yes.
Councilmember Stevens?
Yes.
Councilmember Greg Noni?
Yes.
Councilmember McGowan?
Yes.
Okay, motion passes unanimously, and thanks to each of you for supporting that and for the discussion. All right, next, public hearings, Madam Clerk, would you please read the item?
A review and recommendation by the Planning and Zoning Commission regarding a follow-up request by the owners of the property to allow an extension of time for the commencement of construction to begin on this 11.3-acre site situated within the city's town center area, which was previously approved for the total of seven multiple-story buildings, housing 168 condominiums and/or apartment units, along with two commercial buildings fronting onto Manchester Road, with associated parking being identified as P.Z. dot 14 dash 07, Covert Cossier Homes, Inc., Stock &amp; Associates. The property is currently zoned C-8, Planned Commercial District, Town Center Workplace and Neighborhood Edge Districts, and located on the north side of Manchester Road, west of Taylor Road, locator number 24V630286, street address 16815 Manchester Road. The commission considered a small request in 2017, consider a similar request in 2017. Subsequently, four petitioners requested a variance from the city's Board of Adjustments Subsequently, four petitioners requested a variance from the city's Board of Adjustments for the same, which was granted for a period of 12 months, which expired on January 17th, 2019. If the Planning and Zoning Commission does not support the requested extension of time, direction is needed as to whether to begin the zoning revocation process as set forth in the City of Wildwood's zoning ordinance in chapter 415.190, C dash eight planned commercial district.
Thank you, Jody. Have anything you'd like to mention relative to this item?
Yes, Mr. Mayor. Mr. Mayor, members of the city council, the Planning and Zoning Commission has provided for your consideration tonight its report with recommendation regarding the matter that was just read into the record by the Assistant City Clerk. This particular item has been before the Planning and Zoning Commission and city council on several occasions. The initial zoning began in 2007 and as part of that, it was one of the first projects to face the outcomes associated with the Great Recession. Although the project is at 12 years of age, so to speak, at least in terms of the zoning ordinance associated with the site, much of that time was consumed by the Great Recession and the lack of residential development, regardless if it's single-family detached or multiple-family during that same period. The Planning and Zoning Commission considered the request for the extension to commence construction. The Planning and Zoning Commission endorsed that extension through July of 2020. The rationales for that favorable recommendation relate to the ability to provide a development interest, a clear roadmap relative to how the site should be developed to comply with the town center plan. It also defines the minimum standards that are expected and without the extension, there are ancillary impacts that the Planning and Zoning Commission believe would not be acceptable. Therefore, you do have a favorable recommendation from the Planning and Zoning Commission on this particular extension request.
Thank you. And I believe, um, we don't, do we have any other speaker cards on this, Madam Clerk? We had one earlier.
I think there was one.
Yeah, there was one earlier, so if we could just make sure the minutes reflect that, uh, we did have a speaker, uh, relative to this. Okay, any questions for Joe? Uh, Councilmember Shea.
Joe, I apologize, but I'm having iPad problems, uh, over the weekend and so I wanted to understand, P&amp;Z is recommending an 18-month extension. Is that to ensure that the builder comes back with a more, um, favorable type of, um, build out similar to what the one resident had requested that, um, did not have so many units in it? Or what it, what is the intent of the P&amp;Z for extending?
There is a site-specific ordinance that was approved by city council, obviously many years ago. One of the questions that always has arisen about that ordinance, has anything changed relative to the town center plan or, or other regulations that would alter the concept or the design associated with it? And none have. The site development plan is also approved. The extension is to commence construction.
Okay.
So there's two performance standards associated with most planned districts. The first is to complete the site development plan within a specified period of time and once that's done, then to start the project.
Mm-hmm.
The site development plan is also complete.
Okay.
So from the perspective of Mr. Cook's comments, certainly he has the right to express his comments. The department would just say it is town center.
Mm-hmm.
And regardless if you believe that density is appropriate or not appropriate, the plan allows for densities that are greater than anywhere else in Wildwood, whether it be a suburban or non-urban residential area category.
Yeah.
And so again, the issue here is, do you feel the extension is wanted, warranted and that development activity will start in 18 months? If you do, you, the commission is recommending you support it. If you believe that too much time has passed and that the project isn't something that the city would support now despite complying with the town center plan, then you should vote no.
Okay.
Councilor Shea.
Yeah, I, uh, totally appreciate Mr. Cook's comments because I have been frustrated watching this for 12 years granting extensions. And you, you mentioned the adverse impacts of granting the extension. Could you elaborate that and then I have a follow-up?
Well, the adverse impact is more related to not granting the extension. There was an update of the plan that occurred just shortly after the zoning ordinance was put into place for this particular site. The site now, if it were to be rezoned in current timeframe, 2019, would be single-family detached dwellings. The department didn't support that change in the land use category from neighborhood general to neighborhood edge because in this particular instance, the property abuts Manchester Road, which is being upgraded to accommodate more traffic. It abuts the church on the east. It abuts the theater and city hall on the north and a portion of it abuts Larry's Tavern on the west. It is not a prime, single-family detached site relative to the surrounding land use, at least not one that we've typically said is acceptable. It can be, certainly, but it's not one that lends itself well. So if the commencement of construction is not started in 18 months, the whole fabric of the development changes.
Okay, so my problem, the density is arguable, uh, whether, what's a problem? And we could, we could probably go into that detailed conversation. I know that that has occurred at a deep level at Planning and Zoning. I haven't been party to every single discussion, but enough of them to know. My problem is with these extensions. You know, you can only cry about the Great Recession for so many years and now it's time to decide, um, are you in this project or are you not? As from a developer standpoint. And, and, and I think the waiting game is played way too often and is way too accommodated by planning and zoning. Uh, we have to only look at, uh, the reserve now in its seventh postponement, a name change in seven postponements. And we get, I begin to get suspicious about what the intentions are behind those postponements. Some are more obvious than others. I'm not sure what's going on with this property. It seems to be a lack of, um, financial commitment possibly. Uh, maybe the conditions just aren't right for moving on this project, but 12 years is really an abuse of our process and I think it needs to be denied. Thank you.
Councilor Manten. Oh, I'm sorry, Joe.
I certainly appreciate your opinion. I will just tell you, within the last 18 months to two years, I've met with three different development entities about the project. In fact, there was a contract on the property by a multiple-family developer. That contract, uh, did not come to fruition, not because of anything relating to Wildwood. It related more to core, core of engineers requirements, MSD requirements, and then building requirements associated with St. Louis County.
Follow-up. You make a great point in that there are a lot of conditions that go into projects of this nature and size and they are not always, you know, hinging on Wildwood's, um, planning and regulations. And, um, uh, we sometimes get caught in a trap of feeling like we're responsible for every, um, uh, failed attempt or, uh, deal that falls through. And this is just the reality of market conditions and, um, you know, MSD requirements, as we know, can be onerous. So I think, thank you for bringing that up because I think that we don't hear about that often enough in terms of, in the context of developments that stagnate or get the deals to drop, drop out. So thank you.
You're welcome.
Councilor Manten.
I agree with Councilmember Shea in this matter. I can remember, we are asking for extensions when I was city council liaison, the planning and zoning. You know, density aside, I mean, it is an abuse of the process. This has been going on for 12 years. I'm surprised that that's all. And, uh, I would not approve or support an extension.
So Joe, are you looking for a motion, uh, are you looking for action tonight by the council? So what, what is that?
Typically, at the conclusion of the public hearing and all comments are received, the department, based upon the favorable recommendation from the Planning and Zoning Commission, would respectfully request the preparation of legislation. If you choose not to do that, there needs not be a motion.
Okay. Councilmember Garitano.
Thank you, Joe. Um, I do have a couple of comments here regarding this here. Um, the, the concern definitely is the number of extensions. Um, I counted in the report that if this extension were to be, uh, allowed tonight, this would be the total of seven extensions over the past several years. I mean, back in 2008, you had an extension to complete the site development plan. In April 2010, it was an extension to authorize, uh, to complete the site development plan. In June of 2013, another extension. January of 2015, September 2016, and now we're here. Um, in fact, I remember this, uh, when I first came to council back in around 2015 and, you know, I thought back then, well, you know, he needed some more time and we heard that there was some interest, but, uh, it kind of feels like deja vu now a bit because we also saw this in 2017. And in fact, in 2017, the council and planning and zoning, I don't believe, I don't think it was approved. It was not recommended and I understood that it went through the board of adjustment route, which is a right that you have and they can grant that and they did grant it. So, so it is a bit concerning that we kind of, this, this keeps getting pushed out. Uh, I'm at the point where I think some folks, if, the way this could play out is, construction equipment could show up if, uh, if there's an extension. And I think I'd get a lot of calls from people saying, what happened overnight? Where did this get approved? And I think it would be a bit of a shock to folks to say, well, it got approved back in 2008 at the site development plan in 2011. And sentiment changes over time from our residents. You know, there've been some changes in the area, some new developments. We have new residents who had not voiced, voiced an opinion back then. And so, um, you know, I wonder if even for the petitioner, maybe kind of freeing up from this plan, would it help you sell this property even better or, or more, uh, you'd be able to attract someone? Maybe perhaps this plan that's been approved is kind of locking you in and it's a tough shoe for, you know, someone to fit in. Uh, because I've heard that from folks and I've checked with folks, I've asked them around what they think of it. Um, and the consensus, the majority of folks that I represent feel that, you know, it's better to not grant any more extensions and kind of let it play out if someone comes along that has a serious interest in this plan. We have a process in place here and it allows people to provide input and, um, we're not kind of going back to a plan that was approved back in 2008. So, um, those, these are the thoughts that I have around this here and from what I've heard from the residents, uh, regarding this. And then Joe, I do have a question. You mentioned that, I think it was in 2012, the land use changed on this, right? So that it would not allow multifamily housing?
That's correct, sir. The new category from the regulating plan is neighborhood edge versus neighborhood general.
Was that done, uh, with resident input, that change?
Well, it was part of the overall town center plan that began in 2008 and concluded in 2010 with the Planning and Zoning Commission and then another two years of discussion before it was finally approved by city council.
So I believe there was input and obviously there was a reason why it got changed back then, that folks wanted it to be, uh, different than what this was originally approved in 2008. And therefore, this doesn't let that, uh, opinion, you know, of those residents and those who were involved, uh, come to life. I mean, we're kind of reverting back. So, uh, I just, I just feel from what I've heard from folks that maybe a fresh start would probably do better, um, because I think what we hear is the same reason, that we need more time and someone's going to show up at some point. And, um, that hasn't happened. And I wish we could, I wish I could say, look, you know, there, looks like you have a serious buyer and we're going to get this done, but I'm not hearing that. In fact, what I heard from Joe was that the, um, the one that was recently, uh, did not materialize. So if you have comments, we'd love to hear what you've got to say, but those are my thoughts.
So councilors, we've had a little, some discussion and I'm not, I'm not sure I'm hearing anything favorable here. So let's get a motion on the floor before, let's see what, is there anyone who wants to make a motion to approve of the recommendation? Councilmember Bertolino, is there a second to that motion? Councilmember Werther. Okay. Uh, we have three councilors on here, but we do have the petitioner here. You, you want to respond to that? If you'd please come to the microphone to do that. And so, Joe, what is your specific question to her? So...
I think what is different this time than has been the last, at least for me, the last two times?
A piece of information that I did want to share with you, we do have an interested buyer right now. They have met with Joe recently. They are represented by a real estate person who is in the audience this evening. We do not have a contract right now, but they are interested and interested as the plan is drawn.
So...
The other thing that is valuable here, um, it, it's been a tough site. We have the city street that runs through the property. If we are able to sell this property, we will be able to construct the north-south city street that goes through our property. We are also dealing with the Corps of Engineers. There is not exactly a creek in the property. It's a drainage ditch, but for that reason, we're dealing with the Corps of Engineers. I also have that permit from them and it's still in effect.
So council...
But the most important thing is that there is a legitimate, very interested person right now. They've met with Joe. They're represented by a real estate person who is here in the audience this evening.
Okay. So councilors, I'm not speaking for or against the motion, just to provide you with an option that would be available and that would be, uh, should you choose to postpone the motion that's on the floor for a period of 30, 60, whatever days, uh, in light of, uh, what the petitioner said. Uh, Councilor Doddwell?
I have a motion to extend for 30 days. Do you have individuals working with you?
So she already, there's already a motion on the floor to approve of the department's, or the, the action of the Planning and Zoning Commission. So you, you could, I, I think you would probably be making a motion to postpone for 30 days. Okay, that's all right. Is there a second to the motion to postpone for 30 days, the main motion? Seconded by Councilmember McGowan, so the discussion is on the motion to postpone. Um, and actually, councilors, I'm just going to mention something relative to this. This is something we might want to take up with Admin Public Works. Roberts Rules of Order provides that motions to postpone are debatable. Our code actually provides that they are not debatable. And that is a discrepancy, I think historically, they've been debated, uh, and so without objection, for the good of the order, we'll continue with that. But I would ask that the Admin Public Works examine that because it can sink or, or swim lots of things and, and become very important. And it is a discrepancy in our, between, actually, our code, because our code says follows Roberts, follow Roberts' rules and Roberts' rules provide something different. So we can make note of that. All right. So the motion on the floor is to postpone. Without objection, we'll continue our past course of action of discussing, uh, only on the motion to postpone. Uh, just one second, Councilor Stein. So Councilor Stevens, I had you next. Are you on the motion to postpone or the main motion?
Uh, no, my question was answered. Thank you.
Okay, thank you. Councilor Bertolino on the main motion or, okay. Councilor Stein on the referral or on postponement?
Yeah, so a question for you, Joe, is, um, wouldn't P&amp;Z be able to postpone had they wanted to?
The Planning and Zoning Commission had a number of options, one of which is postpone.
Okay. I mean, I don't like to be in the business of second guessing P&amp;Z. Um, you know, we have on occasion. But, I mean, I really wonder if, if 30 days is even going to be enough. I mean, I, I'd almost be, um, and, and guide me through this, but I'd almost be more apt to say, let's send this back to P&amp;Z until it's ready to come forward. Um, because I, I don't know if 30 days is going to be enough and I don't want the council to decide if what has developed with a buyer is sufficient. So I guess what I'm saying is that I am inclined to vote against the postponement in favor of potentially, if that fails, to send it back to P&amp;Z until it's ready to come back.
So that is exactly the way it would have to occur, actually, because, um, a motion to postpone takes precedence over referral. So this would have to be decided first and then we could get to that. Joe, a question, uh, the city attorney mentioned, is there any time limit relative to the 30-day proviso? Is, is there any time limit in terms of that being sufficient amount or not? Or you think that's okay?
of this site and the city, it was a very brief meeting. There was just some discussion about some potential changes to the plan. So 30 days is probably the bare minimum, if not enough. But, again, the discretion of the city council is clear...
And if it comes back and it's not enough, they could postpone again, so...
They certainly could.
Okay. Any further discussion on the motion to postpone? Council, I'm sorry, Councilmember Werther?
Thank you. I think you were getting to it, but I'll ask Mr. Vinich. Should the motion to postpone, or maybe to provide some comfort to council members, what would happen if the motion to postpone were to prevail? What would the department be doing? Would it do any changes, make any changes, or continue to work with Ms. Corsair as the property's currently zoned today and with the site development plan as it is today?
Yes, with the 30-day postponement by city council, it would be, I believe, a priority to the department, or should be a priority to the department, to contact the real estate agent representing the development entity, as well as Ms. Corsair, and say, we have 30 days to basically provide an assurance that something is going to happen consistent either with the site plan that's been approved and the ordinance governing the site or otherwise.
That would be perhaps representative of some sort of contract intent to purchase, something like that?
Or just some type of, yes, some type of commitment that could be referenced to the city council.
Thank you.
Okay. Seeing no further discussion, Councilmember Gattano?
Sure. Joe, a question for you. If there is any change to this plan, what input do the residents have regarding it? I know when we go through a new plan through the process, we have hearings, we have planning and zoning that has its meetings, and then it ultimately comes to council. This one's a little fuzzy for me because it's something that's been approved in the past. And so how do we make sure that, you know, if there are changes, then how do we get a good review on that and the ability to provide an opinion on that?
The major difference is that if the changes are minimal in nature to the ordinance, which then are reflected in the plan, it's just one meeting at Planning and Zoning Commission. If there are wholesale changes, then it's just the standard process. Both instances, the site will be posted, a mailing will be done to surrounding residents, and there'll be an opportunity at Planning and Zoning Commission for residents and any others to voice their opinion, or opinions.
Okay, seeing no further discussion, all in favor of the motion to postpone, please say aye. Let's do a show of hands. That didn't sound real convincing there. All in favor of the motion to postpone? Two, three, four. All opposed? Okay, motion to postpone fails. So now we're back to the main motion, which is to accept the recommendation from Planning and Zoning. Any further discussion on that? Seeing none, roll call vote please. Thank you, Joe.
Councilmember Manton?
No.
Councilmember Shay?
No.
Councilmember Dillard?
No.
Councilmember Doddwell?
No.
Councilmember Taylor?
Nope.
Councilmember Bertolino?
Yes.
Councilmember McCutcheon?
Yes.
Councilmember Boe?
Yes.
Councilmember Jordan?
No.
Councilmember Stein?
No.
Councilmember Werther?
Yes, yes, sorry.
Councilmember Gattano?
No.
Councilmember Stevens?
No.
Councilmember Gregg Nani?
No.
Councilmember McGowan?
No.
Councilmember Bartoni?
No.
Okay, so the motion fails. All right, moving into legislation, Bill 2442 is before the council for final passage, and it concerns wards one, five, seven, and eight. Is there a motion for the second reading of the bill? Made by Councilmember Stevens, seconded by Councilmember McGowan. All in favor, please say aye. Any opposed? Any abstentions? Ms. Meyer, please read Bill 2442.
Bill 2442, an ordinance of the city of Wildwood, Missouri, authorizing the mayor to negotiate and execute a city contractor agreement on behalf of the city of Wildwood with Gamma Tree Experts for the fiscal year 2019 Spring Tree Planting Project, including other incidental items as shown on the project specifications and drawings.
Thank you. Rick, do you have anything you'd like to mention further relative to Bill 2442?
Briefly, Mayor, I want to mention last meeting, Councilmember McGowan asked about the guarantee, there is a 12...
Ladies and gentlemen, please, we're having trouble hearing our speaker here.
There is a guarantee with the projects, the 12-month guarantee, in case the planting things die. They are also required to water the trees throughout the summer of 2019.
Okay. Any questions for Rick? Seeing none, please call the roll for final passage of Bill 2442.
Councilmember Shay?
Yes.
Councilmember Dillard?
Yes.
Councilmember Doddwell?
Yes.
Councilmember Taylor?
(inaudible).
Councilmember Bertolino?
Yes.
Councilmember McCutcheon?
Yes.
Councilmember Boe?
Yes.
Councilmember Jordan?
Yes.
Councilmember Stein?
Aye.
Councilmember Werther?
Aye.
Councilmember Gattano?
Yes.
Councilmember Stevens?
Yes.
Councilmember Gregg Nani?
Yes.
Councilmember McGowan?
Yes.
Councilmember Bartoni?
Yes.
Councilmember Manton?
Yes.
Okay, bill passes. Moving to Bill 2443 is before the council, also for final passage, and it concerns all wards but Ward six. One, two, three, four, five, seven, and eight. Is there a motion for the second reading of the bill? Made by Councilmember Shay, seconded by Councilmember Werther. All in favor, please say aye. Any opposed? Any abstentions? Ms. Meyer, please read Bill 2443.
Bill 2443, an ordinance of the city of Wildwood, Missouri, authorizing the mayor to negotiate and execute a city contractor agreement on behalf of the city of Wildwood with J.M. Marshoots Construction Company for the fiscal year 2019 Concrete Street Slab and Sidewalk Project, including traffic control and other incidental items as shown on the project specifications and drawings.
Thank you. Rick, anything further you'd like to mention relative to Bill 2443?
No, sir, but I'm available for any questions or comments.
Okay. Councilor Stevens?
Rick, I know you said that you were, that we do send out notices, and like for the Ward eight, it was going to start like May or June. What's the lead time on the notices? 30 days, 60 days, how much?
Usually, we don't get them out until we're pretty close to starting work. We don't want to get the word too far out in advance so people forget, and they're not aware of it. So usually, I would say a week or two.
Okay.
We can work with you if you have any specific concerns in that regard.
Well, I just had a, like, you know, if someone was going to pay money to have their home power washed, and then we start a construction project right outside their house, you know, two weeks later, I just didn't want to, you know, cause any problems with residents. Enough notice, but not too much, just to, I was just curious more than anything.
We also require the contractor to knock on their door, too, before they actually start work. So they get the letter, and then they are told that they have to knock on the door and make that personal contact.
Excellent, thank you.
Any further questions or comments? Seeing none, please call the roll. Ms. Meyer, final passage of Bill 2443.
Councilmember Dillard?
Yes.
Councilmember Doddwell?
Yes.
Councilmember Taylor?
Yes.
Councilmember Bertolino?
Yes.
Councilmember McCutcheon?
Yes.
Councilmember Boe?
Yes.
Councilmember Jordan?
Yes.
Councilmember Stein?
Yes.
Councilmember Werther?
Aye.
Councilmember Gattano?
Yes.
Councilmember Stevens?
Yes.
Councilmember McGowan?
Yes.
Councilmember Bartoni?
Yes.
Councilmember Manton?
Yes.
Councilmember Shay?
Yes.
Okay, bill passes. Moving to Bill 2444, it's before the council for final passage, it concerns Ward eight. Is there a motion for the second reading of the bill? Made by Councilmember Stevens, seconded by Councilmember Gattano. All in favor, please say aye. Any opposed? Any abstentions? Ms. Meyer, please read Bill 2444.
Bill 2444, an ordinance of the city of Wildwood, Missouri, authorizing the mayor to negotiate and execute a city contractor agreement on behalf of the city of Wildwood with Gershenson Construction Company, Inc., for the construction of the Manchester Road Streetscape Project Phase Three, including traffic control and other incidental items as shown on the construction drawings and specifications.
Thank you. Rick, anything you would like to mention relative to this bill?
No, sir, but again, I'm available for any questions or comments.
Any questions for Rick or comments? Seeing none, Ms. Meyer, please call the roll for final passage of Bill 2444.
Councilmember Doddwell?
Yes.
Councilmember Taylor?
Yes.
Councilmember Bertolino?
Yes.
Councilmember McCutcheon?
Yes.
Councilmember Boe?
Yes.
Councilmember Jordan?
Yes.
Councilmember Stein?
Yes.
Councilmember Werther?
Aye.
Councilmember Gattano?
Yes.
Councilmember Stevens?
Yes.
Councilmember Gregg Nani?
Yes.
Councilmember McGowan?
Yes.
Councilmember Bartoni?
Yes.
Councilmember Manton?
Yes.
Councilmember Shay?
Yes.
Councilmember Dillard?
Yes.
Okay, thank you. Bill 2445 is before the council for, also final passage, and concerns Ward six. Is there a motion for the second reading of the bill? Made by Councilmember Jordan. Seconded by Councilmember Gregg Nani. All in favor, please say aye. Any opposed? Any abstentions? Ms. Meyer, please read Bill 2445.
Bill 2445, an ordinance of the city of Wildwood, Missouri, authorizing the mayor to negotiate and execute a city contractor agreement on behalf of the city of Wildwood with Corrective asphalt Materials LLC for the fiscal year CRF Restorative Seal Project, including traffic control and other incidental items as shown on the construction drawings and specifications.
Thank you. Rick, anything you would like to mention relative to Bill 2445?
No, sir, but again, I'm available for any questions or comments.
All right. Any questions for Rick or any comments? Seeing none, Ms. Meyer, please call the roll for final passage of Bill 2445.
Councilmember Taylor?
Yes.
Councilmember Bertolino?
Yes.
Councilmember McCutcheon?
Yes.
Councilmember Boe?
Yes.
Councilmember Jordan?
Yes.
Councilmember Stein?
Yes.
Councilmember Werther?
Aye.
Councilmember Gattano?
Yes.
Councilmember Stevens?
Yes.
Councilmember Gregg Nani?
Yes.
Councilmember McGowan?
Yes.
Councilmember Bartoni?
Yes.
Councilmember Manton?
Yes.
Councilmember Shay?
Yes.
Councilmember Dillard?
Yes.
Councilmember Doddwell?
Yes.
Okay, bill passes. Moving to Bill 2446, it's also for final passage and concerns all wards. Is there a motion for the second reading of the bill? Made by Councilmember Stevens, seconded by Councilmember McCutcheon. All in favor, please say aye. Any opposed? Any abstentions? Ms. Meyer, please read Bill 2446.
Bill 2446, an ordinance by the city council of the city of Wildwood, Missouri, authorizing a certain change to Chapter 140, Finance Section 140.120 Traffic Generation Assessment Trust Fund of the Code of Ordinances, which thereby alters how assessments are determined in association with the East and West Trust Fund areas of the city of Wildwood, Missouri, relative to the associated zoning district designations, the types of uses, and the parking ratios that are applied in this regard.
Thank you. Joe, anything you would like to mention relative to Bill 2446?
No, sir, Mr. Mayor, there have been no changes, but the department is available for questions or comments.
Okay, any questions or comments? Councilmember Gregg Nani?
Yeah, quick question. The rate, the, this is for the traffic generation fees per parking space, it's now going to be how much?
Depends on the type of use, but the typical and the most consistent assessment we make is for single-family detached dwellings, and it's about $1,250 a space.
And that's an increase of how much?
Well, we're not increasing the fee, we're increase, we're changing how we assess it based upon the number of parking spaces provided. We were considering changing the fee structure itself, but there was a need to have further study done by an engineering firm. We received a proposal from an engineering firm to assess the overall cost of improvements through the next 20-year timeframe. The cost was too significant, and the council committee didn't support it. In lieu of having that, the next solution to the assessment question was to consider how we, how we counted the spaces associated with each use.
Okay, and the cost on this is passed along, of course, to the purchaser of the home, is that correct?
That would be my understanding, that if we charge something to the developer, the developer just passes it on through.
Councilor Taylor?
Yes, I have a particular interest in this, and I'm supportive of it. I was very interested in the TGA when I first heard of it, and I was very interested to hear that initially, Wildwood set the fee structure parallel, or hitched it really to the St. Louis County. And Wildwood has different needs, different characteristics, one of the reasons why many of us, although not officially, many of us opposed the merger. And I'm very supportive of this, and the rational nexus is still there. So I, I'm going to vote in favor.
Any further comments or questions? Councilmember McGowan?
Joe, what did we ultimately decide at the committee as far as, it's based on the number of parking spaces, correct, or number of garage spaces? And we're going to increase it from what, one to two, or two to three?
Three.
The application, as previously applied, generally looked at the required number of spaces set forth in the zoning ordinance, the parking regulations specifically. Now we'll look at what's truly provided, assuming that if there's a four-car garage on the property, then four cars will occupy those four bays, and they'll use the city streets to come and go.
And historically, what have we been basing it on? Is it on two?
Two. So in most instances, we go...
So any home that has more than two garages is going to get hit with an increase?
Yes. We'll probably see that number go from two per dwelling to three.
Okay.
Because most of the homes built in Wildwood appear to have three-car garages these days.
Thank you.
Councilor Manton?
Joe, maybe you can refresh my memory. Wasn't there going to be a financial analysis to make sure any increase, in this case, is number spaces, but any increase to the fee was going to be looked at covering, or at least a break-even with the developer's use of that property? He's bringing to that problem.
Yes, Mr. Brown, our director of Public Works, brought a proposal to Administration Public Works Committee of City Council. The proposal was $60,000, and there was a feeling that the cost was too much. And so, again, we went to this second approach to address increasing the TGA assessments associated with all uses.
Any further questions? Seeing none, please call the roll for final passage of Bill 2446.
Councilmember Bertolino?
Yes.
Councilmember McCutcheon?
Yes.
Councilmember Boe?
Yes.
Councilmember Jordan?
Yes.
Councilmember Stein?
Yes.
Councilmember Werther?
Aye.
Councilmember Garitano?
Yes.
Councilmember Stevens?
Yes.
Councilmember Gregg Nani?
Yes.
Councilmember McGowan?
Yes.
Councilmember Bertoni?
Yes.
Councilmember Manton?
Yes.
Councilmember Shea?
Yes.
Councilmember Dillard?
Yes.
Councilmember Dodwell?
Yes.
Councilmember Taylor?
Yes.
Councilmember Jordan?
My vote was yes.
Okay, bill passes. Uh, moving to Bill 2440, that was 2447. It's before the council for final passage. The last of the second readings. It concerns wards one and eight. Is there a motion for the second reading of the bill? Made by Councilmember, uh, Gregg Nani, seconded by Councilmember Garitano. Uh, all in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Any abstentions? Ms. Meyer, please read Bill 2447.
Bill 2447, an ordinance of the City of Wildwood, Missouri, authorizing the mayor to negotiate and execute a municipal and cost apportionment agreement, first supplemental agreement on behalf of the City of Wildwood with the Missouri Highways and Transportation Commission for additional maintenance responsibilities for certain bio-retention facilities.
Councilor Gregg Nani?
Yeah, Rick, I asked this question before, and this is really annoying. And MoDOT is hitting us up with this. I understand why these are put in there, but I don't grasp why we responsible for that. If that's part of their engineering design for that road drainage, why do we have to get hit with taking care of these if it belongs to them?
Um, Councilmember, I guess I would respond by saying, saying two things. One, we did set the precedent previously with the, the former 109 improvements to the north, uh, from Clayton Road to, uh, 100. There are two facilities on that stretch that, when they constructed them, essentially, the city agreed to take over the maintenance of them there. So, it's consistent with that project and what we did with those improvements. But again, these are, these are MSD regulations for stormwater. Um, they're not MoDOT's requirements, essentially. These are MSD regulations that they force upon the city and MoDOT when we construct a project. Since we're a co-permittee with MSD, essentially, it is partly our obligation to maintain these facilities when they're in their, when they are on our public right-of-way.
Well, I don't understand, I still understand why we get hit with this. I mean, at least we have, is there a cost sharing on this with MoDOT?
Well, certainly, the overall projects, yes, there's a cost share associated with the overall projects. This pertains to the, the bio-retention facilities constructed, uh, as part of the Main Street Roundabout Project. That project is primarily funded by the city at this point.
I'm going to take the risk of pointing out something here. You know, we should go to this cost sharing with supposedly with this new project on this bridge over here and so forth. It's very interesting, because the city's put up several million dollars for this project overall, and what, MoDOT supposedly is sharing this with us, what, uh, 40, 60, 50, 50? What is the, the cost share supposedly?
Well, as you know, there's four separate projects that make up-
Right, I understand, but, but somewhere in there, there's a percentage that they pay and we pay. But you know what? The percentage that they're paying, my point is this, the percentage that they're paying comes out of federal funds, does it not?
Um, I believe that the funds that they're using are federal funds, yes, that they get directly.
Which means that you and I and everybody else in here are paying for that, that, we're paying double-dipping, because that money that comes from the feds, we've paid to the feds, and then we're paying it out of our city budget. These guys are, are ripping us off. You know what it's called? Highway robbery, pardon the pun.
Any further questions or comments? Seeing none, uh, Ms. Meyer, please call the roll for final passage of Bill 2447.
Councilmember McCutcheon?
Yes.
Councilmember Boe?
Yes.
Councilmember Jordan?
Yes.
Councilmember Stein?
Yes.
Councilmember Werther?
Aye.
Councilmember Garitano?
Yes.
Councilmember Stevens?
Yes.
Councilmember Gregg Nani?
Yes.
Councilmember McGowan?
Yes.
Councilmember Bertoni?
I'll also give a yes.
Councilmember Manton?
Yes.
Councilmember Shea?
Yes.
Councilmember Dillard?
Yes.
Councilmember Dodwell?
Yes.
Councilmember Taylor?
Yep.
Councilmember Bertolino?
Yes.
Okay, moving into first readings, Bill 2448 is before the council concern, and it concerns Ward one and three. That bill passed. Thank you, Steve. Sorry, I forgot to mention that. Uh, one and three, Bill 2448. Is there a motion for first reading made by Councilmember Gregg Nani, seconded by Councilmember McGowan? Um, all in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Any abstentions? Ms. Meyer, please read Bill 2448.
Bill 2448, an ordinance of the City of Wildwood, Missouri, amending Schedule 15 of Title III of the Code of Ordinances of the City of Wildwood, and prohibiting through traffic on Etherington Road between State Route 109 and State Route CC, Wild Horse Creek Road.
Thank you. Rick, anything you'd like to mention relative to this?
Uh, just briefly, Mayor, this was, again, discussed, um, by the Board of Public Safety, and ultimately, the recommendation that is in front of you was the recommendation of the Board of Public Safety to restrict the through traffic on Etherington Road between 109 and Wild Horse Creek Road.
Okay. Councilor Gregg Nani?
Uh, is it possible that we could consider a second reading on this?
You make the motion, it passes by two-thirds.
I'll make a motion of second reading.
Okay, so, we have a motion, second reading. Before we do that, though, just, I, I saw Councilmember Shea's hand. Did you want to say something before this motion is-
I have a question about-
Why don't we do that, and then we'll go to the motion?
Okay. Uh, what do we know about the penalties for violation here? What's the fee? Uh, what do we, what are we looking at? People are going to be penalized for this?
Uh, that's a good question, Councilmember. I don't know if our city attorney or Captain Mundell would be able to answer that question.
We don't know.
We don't know, okay.
I don't know the answer.
Okay, so, at the Board of Public Safety, when it was discussed, did, did that ever come up? Like, was it part of the decision that went into this, or, no?
I don't recall that there was.
Okay, my point is this, that if without appropriate penalty, um, and, and of course, enforcement is part of it, and I think once the, um, frequency of the enforcement increases, um, it, it ought to be a pretty good deterrent, but, and there will be signage, correct?
That's correct, yes.
Okay. All right, well, I'll look into that later, then. Thank you.
Motion for second reading, Councilor Gregg Nani?
Yes, I'll move for second, second reading.
Okay, and seconded by Councilmember Taylor, I believe already had his hand up. Uh, any discussion on the motion for second reading? It takes two-thirds vote. Uh, we'll do voice vote. If it seems that it's, uh, equal, we can go something different. All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Any abstentions? Okay. Um, Ms. Meyer, please read Bill 2448.
Bill 2448, an ordinance of the City of Wildwood, Missouri, amending Section 15 of Title III of the Code of Ordinances of the City of Wildwood, and prohibiting through traffic on Etherington Road between State Road, Route 109 and State Route CC, Wildwood Creek, art, Wild Horse Creek Road.
Thank you. Rick, anything further you want to mention?
Um, no, Mayor, no, nothing further. Thank you.
Any other questions or comments? All right, seeing none, please call the roll for final passage of Bill 2448.
Councilmember Boe?
Yes.
Councilmember Jordan?
Yes.
Councilmember Stein?
Yes.
Councilmember Werther?
Aye.
Councilmember Garitano?
Yes.
Councilmember Stevens?
Yes.
Councilmember Gregg Nani?
Yes.
Councilmember McGowan?
Yes.
Councilmember Bertoni?
Yes.
Councilmember Manton?
Yes.
Councilmember Shea?
Yes.
Councilmember Dillard?
Yes.
Councilmember Dodwell?
Yes.
Councilmember Taylor?
Yes.
Councilmember Bertolino?
Yes.
Councilmember McCutcheon?
Yes.
Okay, thank you. Moving to Bill 2449. It is before the council for first reading, and concerns all wards. Is there a motion for the first reading of the bill? Made by Councilmember Jordan, seconded by Councilmember Gregg Nani. Uh, we're going to do a roll call vote on whether to have a first reading, please.
Councilmember Jordan?
Yes.
Councilmember Stein?
Give me a second.
For everyone's information, this is the, uh, change relative to ward meetings that, um, the intention, I believe, is to prohibit the mayor from having ward, hosting ward meeting.
No, this is not, that's not correct. This is not a change. This is just making the existing ward rules that were brought forward by Admin and Public Works into an ordinance. It's no change. It says basically that the ward rules stay the ward rules.
City Attorney, you want to comment on that?
Well, simply that there were two amendments to the existing rules to add to new sentence, paragraphs eight and nine.
So, it's not the same.
Well, would you like to read it for everyone then?
Councilmember Jordan, please. Um, uh, Councilmember-
You've interpreted it for everyone.
Councilmember Jordan, you're out of order. Councilor Stein is trying to decide what his vote's going to be. Once we get the vote, we can come back. That's the procedure we have to follow. Councilmember Stein?
Uh, yes.
Councilmember Werther?
Aye.
Councilmember Garitano?
No.
Councilmember Stevens?
Yes.
Councilmember Gregg Nani?
Yes.
Councilmember McGowan?
No.
Councilmember Bertoni?
No.
Councilmember Manton?
No.
Councilmember Shea?
Yes.
Councilmember Dillard?
Yes.
Councilmember Dodwell?
No.
Councilmember Taylor?
No.
Councilmember Bertolino?
No.
Councilmember McCutcheon?
No.
Councilmember Boe?
Yes.
I believe it's a tie vote. The chair votes no. Moving into resolutions, Resolution 2019-10 is before the council and concerns all wards. Is there a motion to adopt Resolution 2019-10? Made by Councilor Dodwell, seconded by, seconded, Councilor Gregg Nani. Ms. Meyer, please read the Resolution 2019-10.
Resolution 2019-10, a resolution of the Council of the City of Wildwood, Missouri, authorizing the mayor to negotiate and execute a consultant services agreement with Gov. HR USA LLC to conduct an executive search process to aid the mayor and council of the city in the recruitment and selection of a new city administrator.
Okay, thank you. Uh, Councilor Dodwell, as Chair of the committee, do you want to say anything relative to this item?
Um, we, um, have had several committee meetings. We've gone through, uh, several, about 15 different organizations. We ended up with two proposals back after we sent out requests to 15 organizations, which was a little bit disappointing, but, uh, by the same token, um, we interviewed both organizations. The committee members came up with various questions, had conversations with, uh, both, um, groups, and felt that, um, Gov. HR was going to be able to provide, um, the quality of experience, especially for our particular region, that we needed. Uh, we will be meeting with, uh, the project manager on this, I believe, the first week, the fifth, yeah, thank you, Tim, or Councilmember Werther, um, on the fifth, and, uh, be putting together the actual planning process and how we move forward to start, um, looking at potential city administrators for the City of Wildwood. So, when we get that framework put together, I'll be more than happy to share that with the rest of the council, if you're interested.
Thank you. Councilor Stein?
Um, Councilmember Dodwell, isn't Gov. HR the, the same firm we used three years ago? It is. Okay. So, they do have some familiarity with the city. The project manager did not work with us on this particular project. Okay. Or the, the previous project, so this is a new face, uh, with some new, um, interaction. Okay, so, my editorial comment is that I think that, and probably lots that were here then, lots of members, uh, felt like there was more to be desired from that group, uh, then. So, I guess I would just, um, beseech the, uh, the committee to really stay on top of these guys and make sure that they do us- We had mentioned that in our discussions with them, that we were not as, um, impressed with the work that they did, and so that they better, uh, put on a good show, or they may not see all the funds coming their way. Great, thank you.
Councilor Shea?
Only add that, um, with only two proposals received, the choices were limited.
Yes.
And the other, the other, um, entity was substantially higher. And, uh, while they, they did provide a, a few things that, that HR did not, it, it, there was also a polling of municipalities on, uh, there were also polling to municipalities that had experiences with both, and there weren't very favorable ratings for the more expensive firm anyway. So, we're like, okay, you know, half a dozen won, six the other, um, we'll, we'll try to make it work.
Okay. Any other comments? Seeing none. Um, all in favor of the motion to adopt Resolution 2019-10, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Any abstentions? Uh, resolution passes. Moving to Resolution 2019-11. It's before the council, and it concerns all wards. Is there a motion to adopt Resolution 2019-11? Made by Councilmember Dodwell, seconded by Councilmember Werther. Uh, Ms. Meyer, please read the resolution.
Resolution 2019-11, a resolution by the City Council authorizing the purchase of a portable metal detector and associated hand wands through the use of Proposition P funds for municipal court safety and other building security needs associated with its use for public purposes.
Thank you. Uh, the genesis of this, um, was that one evening I came to the, um, City Hall, and, and we were having court night, and I noticed that we didn't have, um, any metal detectors. And the fact is that, um, we have several, uh, defendants, obviously, appearing, and, and many of them have prior convictions, and in some cases, for very serious offenses. So, I spoke with, uh, the judge, the prosecuting attorney, Board of Public Safety. There was unanimous approval for this, um, and I hope we pass it. Joe, anything for the, you want to mention relative to this?
Mr. Mayor, members of the City Council, the Police Department has done the line-share of the research regarding the type of unit and the hand wands. Uh, they've worked with Hackett Security previously and believe this would be sufficient to meet the safety needs, particularly for municipal court.
Thank you. Councilor Gregg Nani?
Is, is this plan, is this plan to be used on the citizens who come into this chamber to meet with us?
No.
At this stage, there is no plan. It's certainly something that would, could, or would be discussed in the future.
I would never support that. So, if you're going to use it on our, on our citizens, then you can forget this. But if you're just using it for court purposes, I might be inclined to let you do that.
It's just for court purposes. Any other questions? Seeing none, all in favor of-
Mr. Mayor?
I'm sorry.
Um, I'm sure you all remember Kirkwood, Missouri. The perpetrator of that mass killing was a resident of Kirkwood. He wasn't a stranger. He didn't come off Interstate 44. And I think just because we feel confident that we're safe here doesn't necessarily mean we are. And one of the people that was killed in Kirkwood was, kind of, uh, Mr. Yost, their Public Works Director, who I knew from working with him over the years. He sat in his chair and was shot in the head. So, I don't know if it's easy just to say we're not going to do it, just because we believe our residents won't. I think there's this minimum level of security that all of us deserve, particularly staff, who's not protected like everyone at the dais.
Thank you for those comments, Joe. Well taken. Councilmember Shea?
Um, I hear what you're saying, and I think it's a valid point. And, um, in order to get to that discussion, do you, do you want us to take this up in committee?
I think that is the, the appropriate step. I'm not necessarily advocating it. The Police Department, our municipal judge, the prosecuting attorney, there's a lot of people that need to weigh in and speak to this.
Mm-hmm.
If they feel it's unnecessary, great. If they feel it is a minimum level of security, or if there's other alternatives, great. I just think it needs to be discussed by a committee, and then ultimately, a discussion held by City Council. It hasn't happened. I pray it never happens, but it only takes once.
Yeah, well, and I, I believe there was a period where we did sort of touch on this, when we were talking about, um, uh, I think it was at the time, it was concern about, uh, councilmembers concealing carry into this building. And we negotiated, um, the rights of, uh, elected officials to carry concealed weapons into public spaces. Um, and then we talked about, uh, detection monitoring at the door, and I think there was, you know, concern at the time about it being rather cumbersome with, um, with the amount of people that come in and out of here. And, um, I, I don't think we ever got to a resolution about that. Like, we didn't, we didn't say yea or nay. We just kind of said, oh, yeah, it's going to be tough.
So, Councilmember Shea, are you, are you going to make a motion to do something that was suggested by, uh, Joe?
I'm making a point, and I would appreciate it if you wouldn't interrupt me.
Well, we're getting widely off the germaneness of, of the resolution. Go ahead.
Okay. So, my, my question, or my suggestion, I guess, and my, trying to get from you, is, um, the seriousness of what you just explained to us, I think deserves additional talk. And so, um, I'm hearing you say we want to, it would probably be good to take it to committee.
I think that's an excellent suggestion, Councilmember Shea. Again, the department, and as co-interim city administrator, I'm not advocating it. I understand that most people that come into a meeting, whether it be Planning and Zoning Commission, City Council, I recognize 90% of them. But again, I'm sure in Kirkwood, they never thought it would happen.
Absolutely. And I, and I, and I know people who survived that as well, and it, it was tragic. But, uh, thank you. So, on, on that, do we need to vote on this resolution first, and then I make a motion, or how would you-
That's a great question. You have two options. You could amend this resolution to, um, also include that that occur, or this could be voted on, and you could make a new motion relative to that.
Oh, let's just keep it clean, and I'll make one after.
Okay. Uh, Mr. Cross?
I think, um, you know, Mr. Vunich made a very good point, uh, with regards to safety issues, as it relates to this building, as it relates to the citizens and the residents that come into these meetings. Um, when Mr. Vunich and I and Mr. Brown talked about this particular bill, I think it was, you know, it's, or this resolution, rather, it's, it's pretty straightforward and, and, and pretty important, and, you know, thankfully, the mayor brought it to our attention and said, look into it. But in our opinion, in Mr. Vunich's and mine, and Mr. Brown's opinion, this is just a first step. So, we talked about it. In fact, Mr. Vunich and I had a conversation with Captain Mundell and Sergeant Wendling, and talked about the safety of this building. We have meetings in this building four nights out of five of, of a work week. And we have meetings in here, we have meetings in the community room. We have, people can access this building from two different points of entry. So, from the co-city administrators' point of view, we are exposed, and that, and that position, um, uh, is reinforced by the conversation that we had with the Wildwood police gentleman that we spoke with. So, Mr. Vunich and I asked those two gentlemen to kind of take a look at it and see where we are exposed. There are things that we can do beyond just simply having a metal detector and a couple wands on court night. The mayor is absolutely right. That is a, a different group of people that are coming in. They are people that, they're here for reasons. They have run afoul of the law in one way or another, some more egregious than others. But that still does not address somebody coming in and taking out our fine police officers that are standing back there to protect us, or any one of us here. So, Joe and I would be negligent, in my opinion, absolutely negligent, if we didn't take this further and look at how we can make this building safer. When this building was built, it was not built with safety in mind. It was built to be open to the residents to come in. But you know what? Things have changed in five and six and seven years. And we have multiple points of entry, and we have a whole lot of, of issues. There's low-hanging fruit that we can address with very little cost, but that will provide a, 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 a very strong measure of safety, uh, to make sure that our, that our residents that are here, that taking their time to come and talk with us, that somebody doesn't try to take us all out. So, Mr. Gregg Nani, we are, in fact, looking at other options that might very well talk about people going through a metal about people going through a metal detector to come into this building. And for us to think that we don't need to look at that, I don't think that's the correct way, in my opinion.
Thank you. Councilmember Stevens?
Yes, Steve, you had mentioned multiple entrances on here. I noticed that there says portable metal detector, singular. Would it be prudent to increase the not-to-exceed amount in order to get an upstairs and downstairs detector?
Joe.
The St. Louis County Police Department, Wildwood Precinct, is just recommending this one to start. For court purposes, we'll lock the upstairs doors from the back parking lot are locked. And so all court defendants, as well as the attorneys, come in through the main street access point.
Okay, seeing, Councilmember Gregg Noddy.
Yeah, I feel compelled to address what you guys have said. First of all, for a long time, we've had uniformed police officers in this room, and there's an undercover police officer in this room, I won't identify, that most of you don't know about. And to say that there was no precautions taken in the construction of this building is wrong, Mr. Cross. I can't, I won't give the locations of some of those for obvious reasons, but I will tell you that, for example, the glass in the police precinct is bulletproof, and it was asked to be built that way.
Councilmember Gregg Noddy, I would just ask that we not get into the specifics of the security built into this.
I agree with not getting into specifics, and I don't want to talk about other specifics. But the bottom line is that, the bottom line is that there is, there are precautions being taken. I mean, these guys are armed. They got guns on, okay? Tasers, the whole nine yards. Yeah, can somebody come in here and start shooting at us? I suppose. But you know what? If somebody really wants to do that, you ain't going to stop them. So you can discuss this all you want to. And one other thing that I want to point out to you guys, when I was on the Public Safety Board, Captain Tanner was nice enough to get three times to bring out the tactical services here to talk to us about active shooter situations. Not one council member ever attended any of those meetings, not one. Well, okay, okay, well, maybe a couple people did, okay? But you know what? But you know what? We're with the rest of everybody. So we gave you the, you gave you the opportunity to learn about that, and nobody showed up. So I want to hear that we didn't talk about this, or this wasn't done before, because it was.
Okay. So Councilmembers, the motion on the floor, the resolution on the floor, excuse me, is relating specifically and only to the metal detector for court night. So that's what's on the floor. Any further discussion? All in favor of the Resolution 2019-11, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Any abstentions? Motion carries unanimously. Councilmember Shay.
I would like to move that we send the matter for expanding safety considerations for this building into Admin Public Works.
For study and consideration and report back, right?
Correct.
Okay. Second by Councilmember Manten. Any discussion on the motion? Councilmember Dodwell.
I would like to have recommendations come from city staff, Captain Mundell, and the Board of Public Safety. If there's additional, they would like to be part of that.
I guess that's a good question, and I'm not asking this rhetorically, but is this better at Board of, I know your motion's Admin PW, but it seems more logical to be within the scope of the Board of Public Safety.
Yeah, I was going to head in that direction, too. I don't disagree, but I think that the depth of the conversation, particularly...
The depth of the conversation, and as you point out, I think it's great to have officer input, should start in a, in a half the council size committee. I just think we need, there's a lot to go through here. I can't, I really can't go to one more meeting in a month with the different committees that we've got going, and I would prefer to work this into, it's a little selfish on my part, but I think I would like to see it come to a full standing committee discussion first, and then we can work that out.
So the motion is Admin PW, and the second was Councilmember Manten. Are you still good with Admin PW? Okay.
With the permission of City Council, the intermediary step we could take is, we, Captain Mundell, the marshal, Mr. Cross and I can go to the Board of Public Safety before the scheduled Administration Public Works Committee, seek their input, prepare a report, and then have that as additional information to the council.
Is there any objection to that being the first course, and then reporting to Admin PW? Okay, so without objection of the council, that'll be what occurs. Any further discussion? Councilmember Manten?
Just a little comment, I want to echo everything co-interim city administrator Cross said. Here's my litmus test. You need to go through metal detectors to get into a library. So I mean, why wouldn't you want everything at City Hall?
Thank you. Councilmember McGowan?
Just a quick comment. I had a client that was on the Kirkwood Board when that shooting occurred, and since that time, I have had occasion to attend Kirkwood Council meetings on two or three occasions. And they now have everybody that comes in the building go through a walk-through type metal detector, and there are either two or three uniformed police right there at that entrance, that if need be, they can search whatever else they need to. But they have experienced this, they take it seriously, and have done something about it. And yet it is not, I have found, that it is not intrusive in terms of holding back the speed with which folks are able to enter the chamber and that sort of thing. It works pretty well, it certainly works well at the county buildings.
Thank you. Seeing no further discussion on the motion, all in favor of the motion, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Any abstentions? Motion carries unanimously.
Thank you.
Thank you, Joe. Moving, and Steve, and the council. Moving to Resolution 2019-12, it's before the council and concerns all wards. Is there a motion to adopt Resolution 2019-12? May I be Councilmember Dodwell, is there a second? Second by Councilmember McGowan. Ms. Meyer, please read the resolution.
Resolution 2019-12, a resolution by the City Council of the City of Wildwood, Missouri, authorizing the purchase of certain office equipment and furniture for the installation of three cubicles and associated items for the Department of Planning and Parks and the Department of Public Works, thereby allowing the use of space currently used for storage to accommodate the addition of new employees over the course of years to come.
Thank you. Joe, anything you'd like to mention relative to the bill, I'm sorry, Resolution 2019-12?
No, sir, but I am here to answer any questions.
Any questions for Joe? Councilman McCutcheon?
Is, are you guys planning on hiring somebody? Are we just going to buy furniture and let it sit there?
We actually have authorization for two employees in the current budget. We had authorization last year for one of those two. We've been unable to fill those positions because we do not have room for them.
Thank you.
Okay. Any other questions or comments? Seeing none, all in favor of the motion to adopt Resolution 2019-12, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Any abstentions?
Thank you.
All right, thank you. Passes unanimously. Next, moving to Resolution 2019-13, it's before the council and concerns all wards. Is there a motion to adopt Resolution 2019-13? May I be Councilmember Stein, is there a second? Second by Councilmember Taylor. Ms. Meyer, please read the resolution.
Resolution 2019-13, a resolution of censure of Councilmember Tammy Shay.
Can you please, please, I don't know if everyone heard you in that microphone.
Resolution 2019-13, a resolution of censure of Councilmember Tammy Shay.
Okay, thank you. Councilwoman Stein, did you want to speak to this?
Yes, and first, Mr. Mayor and Jessica, would it be possible to read the entirety of the motion?
It would. Would you please read the entirety of the resolution?
Resolution 2019-13, a resolution of censure of City Councilmember Tammy Shay, recommended by Councilmember Stein, all wards.
No, he's talking about the text of the actual resolution.
My apologies.
That's all right.
Resolution 2018-11, a resolution of censure of Councilmember Tammy Shay.
No, 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 no. That was a prior one attached, I think.
Yes. There you go. Oh, she's got it.
Okay. A resolution of censure of Councilmember Tammy Shay was considered by the City of Wildwood on April 23, 2018. This resolution was put forth due to erratic, threatening, and unbecoming behavior on the part of Councilmember Shay while interacting with city, or employees of the city. Rather than passing the resolution, the matter was referred to an ad hoc committee of the City Council to mediate between the parties. Whereas, the ad hoc mediation committee reported some progress between the parties and recommend, recommended that Resolution 2018-11 be postponed indefinitely. The City Council accepted the recommendation and took that action on September 10, 2018. Whereas despite the council's forbearance in 2018, Councilmember Shay has continued to act in a manner beneath the dignity of the office of City Councilmember with needlessly confrontational and demeaning behavior, lack of decorum, and on several occasions, a complete disregard of the city's procedures, norms, rules, and rules. Whereas Councilmember Shay has on several occasions used crude, threatening, and inappropriate language in her personal attacks of the mayor and other City Councilmembers. Whereas Councilmember Shay has not afforded herself of the opportunity provided by the City Council to avoid censure and redeem her behavior. Now therefore, be it resolved by the Council of the City of Wildwood, Missouri as follows. Section 1, the City Council of the City of Wildwood hereby expresses its disappointment in the unacceptable conduct of Councilmember Tammy Shay in conducting her official duties while interacting with the mayor, fellow City Councilmembers, other City officials, and members of the public. Section 2, the City Council further expresses the Councilmember, to Councilmember Shay, the desire that she conduct herself in a professional and dignified manner as becoming of the esteemed office of Councilmember. Section 3, the City Clerk is instructed to lodge this resolution in the official records of the city. Section 4, this resolution shall be in full force and effect from and after its passage and approval.
Thank you. Councilmember Stein.
Okay, so first of all, thank you for reading that all the way through, Jessica, because I think it's very important that we have the context here for what we're talking about. So I did want to address a few items. And first, I will say, I totally hear the critique that I'm kind of an imperfect author of this, of this motion of censure. However, I also feel like it's time to take a stand. And if that means that I be censured because I've exhibited some, you know, bad behavior in the past, so be it. And I'll address those complaints when that censure is brought forward, or that resolution's brought forward. So first of all, it was suggested, or intimated, that this is possibly part of the mayor's agenda. And I got to tell you, I didn't talk to anybody about this. I presented it to the mayor on Wednesday to put on the agenda. And it was basically, I just really felt like it was time to take a stand. I drafted the resolution alone. I had no assistance from the council members, the mayor, the city attorney, others. I did not consider timing here, so while it is a sensitive time, you know, prior to an election, that's not what this is about. I can't account for the timing of, of the behavior that kind of brought me to the point of drafting this, this resolution. So it's unfortunate that the timing occurred when it has. As far as this being a personal vendetta, I don't believe it is. I really don't. I share many positions of importance with, with Ms. Shay that are, that cover just about every resident of Wildwood. And I have great respect for her opinions, the well, the way that she prepares for meetings. A lot of times, her comments are on the mark. What I take issue with is the, the way that sometimes she can go on the offensive. And, and in fact, when the 2018-11 was brought forth by the previous council, and then the first vote of this council was brought forward, I was a supporter of the mediation approach, and also voted for the indefinite postponement of that motion. So what, at that time, my feeling was that there were individuals on the previous council that were kind of exacerbating things, and that, you know, perhaps we could turn a page. We had a lot of new council members, and that things would kind of return to a more, kind of a regular order. Unfortunately, that, that hasn't happened, and, you know, I don't really want to go into the reasons why I think that is, but the fact is, is that it has. Other than that, I do want to say, I feel that the allegations that this is some sort of an anti-woman resolution, I find that abhorrent and offensive. I don't believe I have issues with any other women here, on the council, on the staff, otherwise. So this is definitely not, in my opinion, an anti-female motion. But one of the reasons why I wanted the entire resolution read is because I believe that the motion speaks for itself. It provides the context, it explains why we would be taking this action. And I want it to be a point where this council can take a stand and say, we're ready for the behavior to change. And, you know, the lack of decorum and intimidation tactics must end. I wish I could, could go into in detail what I'm referring to, but it was in closed session, so I will just leave it at that. And my ultimate comment is, it's time for this to change, and enough is enough.
Councilwoman Stevens?
Kind of imperfect is a bit of an understatement by Councilmember Stein. And to say that you're accepting of a censure for three meetings right before you leave, you know, you're so gracious. I think you've missed about 17 meetings in the last two years, so who knows if you'd even show up for your own censure. This resolution is effectively a reconsideration of a motion that was postponed indefinitely. If you read, I went ahead and started to highlight the same words that are used from 2018-11 to 2019-13. It's about 350 words in this motion that Ms. Meyer read, and about 260 of them are the exact same words. We have already been through this, and we have already postponed Resolution 2018-11 indefinitely, meaning forever. This new resolution, it doesn't give any specific dates, it doesn't give any specific actions that Councilmember Shay has done, because if there were specific dates and actions and what actually happened, you would clearly see that Mr. Stein is the problem and not Councilmember Shay. So I'm going to just go ahead and recreate the scene for you, and how this actually came about, because during the last meeting... about, because during the last meeting, we did have a closed session, and I'm not gonna go into what was actually talked about during the closed session, but Councilmember Stein did everything that's listed here that he's accusing Councilmember Shay of, Councilmember Stein did. So just be prepared. This is a little weird, but this is what happened during the closed session, all right? I'm gonna turn my mic off, because this is kind of like, trust me, it's weird. That's what we had to put up with, from Councilmember Stein. And then when they came back out of the closed session, Councilmember Shay is not one to put up with a lot of baloney, all right? So she went over to him, she kind of gave him the business about yelling and smacking the table, okay? And then Councilmember Stein yelled at her, you know, "I may be acting like a blank, you know, but you are a..." And he's cursing at her, so, you know, using inappropriate language, you know, profanity. Also, Councilmember Stein, in emails back and forth to council, has called myself and other councilmembers "sellouts," okay? So again, demeaning, crude, threatening behavior, all right? So Councilmember Stein also has a previous record of doing this at the Hidden Valley debacle, when he's banging on the table again and yelling at residents that he had to, you know, apologize for. So it's like, every single thing that he lists here, these are all things that he did. And so I cannot support this resolution because, one, it's already been postponed indefinitely. We've already dealt with this. These are the exact same words that we have already postponed indefinitely. And then, secondly, again, you know, Councilmember Stein, you were the problem here on this last meeting and this evening. It wasn't Councilmember Shay. So I cannot support this.
Councilor Bertolino.
Yeah, a question and a comment. Greg, can you share with us, because it wasn't playing on the video, what Councilmember Shay said to you when, after we came back from the closed session and we sat down?
I mean, Councilmember Stevens referred to it pretty clearly. I mean, what she said was that I was making a blanket of myself, and I took great offense to that. And I guess, I don't know, if it's okay to describe what happened in closed session, I will tell you right now what this censure is about. Many, many times, there have been, there have been attacks in the middle of meetings, sometimes justified, sometimes not. A lot of times involving interactions between the mayor and Ms. Shay. During this closed session, there was a interaction, and Ms. Shay just belted out and said, she pointed at the mayor and she said, "You shut up. You shut up right now." I think that is very, very disrespectful, no matter how much you have a distaste for someone that's in the mayor's position, or for that matter, another elected official. We need to stop this, and this is the first step to taking a stand and making this change in behavior.
Councilmember Bertolino, do you have any other questions? Do you want to say anything further?
Not a question. I'd like to make a comment, if I may, on this, and a very delicate subject, of course. We are all very wise adults in this room, I think. And I think we all know the difference between being assertive and being aggressive. We know the difference between being strong or having strong feelings and showing strength versus being abrasive. We know the difference between being competitive, you know, and putting yourself out there and being confrontational. It is my belief that being aggressive, showing abusive language, and being abrasive, being confrontational, is not behavior conducive to creating a productive environment, and it certainly is not conducive to constructive dialogue. A lot of people have exhibited those behaviors on this dais. We are dealing with one issue right now, one person, one councilmember, one action, okay? Are there others that fall into this? Probably so, okay? But at this point, I've got to say that if a censure prevails with the corrected behavior, that being assertive, strength, competitiveness, and does away with aggressiveness, abrasive language, and abusive, and confrontational behavior, then a censure is appropriate. I appreciate Tammy Shay. I think she is an intelligent, very assertive person, okay? I also think she crosses the line. And she can become very aggressive, she can become very abrasive, she can become very confrontational, okay? Those are not conducive to good behavior and good productivity of this council, and they certainly do not reflect on what I think is really the core of Councilmember Shay, which is really a very intelligent, articulate person, okay? If a censure brings out the best in the future, then I'm all for the censure. Thank you.
Councilor Taylor.
I also don't have problems with intelligence and strength and assertiveness and echo a lot of those statements. Regarding the issue that something was postponed indefinitely, I remember it was a very strange situation for many of us, or some of us who had just been elected. One of our first contemplations was our censure. And there were documents provided regarding behavior that was alleged at the time and where 40% of the staff had made complaints. At that time, and I think this speaks to the allegation that this is politically motivated or some vendetta, at that time, I believe it was almost unanimous to opt for mediation. And then, upon the recommendation of that ad hoc committee, again, there was a thought, "Well, we'll forego censure, and we'll see how this goes." And we postponed indefinitely. Now postponed indefinitely is tattamount to not ever bringing it up again, but it doesn't mean that something can be reconsidered. We're not actually reconsidering that resolution. Mr. Stein has brought forth another one as per the rules, you know? But I think the context is important, and when I vote for it, it's partly because, in part, because I've come to believe those allegations. Having served, I've come to believe those allegations. I also, I'm not going to put pictures up on the monitor, because, and I will say this, if there were statements about my blog, I would put anything from my blog on that monitor, anything, anything. What I am saying, though, is Ms. Shay does operate an anonymous website, and at least has asked me to like it, which does post pictures of the mayor, face, photo? No.
Councilmembers, please. Councilmember Shay.
Oh, it doesn't? Okay, but I thought it was behavior below the dignity of the office was part of the censure. But I will withdraw those comments. What I am saying is, I have come to believe the original statements. I was not comfortable voting for censure originally, because, you know, it was a he-said, she-said. Well, it was 40% of the staff versus someone else. But having served, I've seen it, and I have to say, that's the behavior that I saw in closed session that was really disturbing to me, was a councilmember saying, "You shut up," to the mayor. This is not appropriate, to say, "You shut up." Regarding Mr. Stein, he has to answer for his own behavior on that. I would say there was a mitigating circumstance. The mitigating circumstance being this: Our mayor is pretty good when it comes to the rules of discussion. I would say that there was an anomaly. Mr. Stein made a motion to end discussion, to move the question. It was seconded. It was not being heard. Debate continued. That was against, that's my recollection, it was against Robert's rules, and Mr. Stein gavelled the table with his hand, saying, "Move the question." There was a motion on the table. I agree, as a point of parliamentary inquiry, Mr. Stein should have prevailed. And it's one of the occasions, is a very few occasion, might be the only occasion, but where I saw a real, real dereliction of duty on the part of the mayor not to recognize proper order. I have never seen Mr. Stein, during that meeting, demean or make a personal attack. He was making a parliamentary inquiry, he was making a point of order. And I would distinguish that between saying, "You shut up now," several times to the mayor. So I find it distinctive, and I also believe that there is courage in Mr. Stein saying that he would answer to his actions separately. And I do believe, though, that we have a long pattern of behavior here that we're dealing with, and it needs to be addressed with this resolution. I will vote in the affirmative.
I believe that the residents of Wildwood are tired of all of the attacks on personality and politicizing, I guess is the best way to describe it. In Wildwood, you know, we don't have political parties that we align ourselves with in relationship to what we do in Wildwood. But there is most definitely a split, and if you look how issues are voted on, it's consistently those with the mayor, those with not. And I believe that it's our responsibility on the council to have a dignity of office. And I think if we really are gonna focus on the dignity of office, then that's where we need to be, not on personalities, but on principles. And I don't, as I've shared with Mr. Stein, I don't, I don't agree on this. I feel it's politicized, it's before the election, and if we really want to get into principles, we could be constantly, as a council up here, going after one or another ad nauseam. I mean, what happened in the meeting that precipitated some of what was discussed is the mayor laughing at the councilwoman when she made a comment and cutting her off repeatedly. But I'm not gonna sit here and say what's right or wrong, but I think it's, I'm not going to vote in support of this, as I also told Councilman Stein, because I don't believe that that's what the voters want from us. I don't believe that we're dealing with something here that is a major overwhelming that happened. We did, as a council, all agree, and it was backed up and even asked of the city attorney at the time, by postponing it indefinitely. Did we need to do something that shut the door permanently or not? Oh, no, by postponing it indefinitely, it would not come up again, and here it is up again. And I think that that's not right. I think it's, you know, if we censure this, well, I've probably got a half dozen censures to bring forward on the mayor, you know? But I'm not throwing all those censures out, but as a council, if we're really worried about issues, we should be worried about things that I have brought forward, about the mayor lying and saying the agenda for my ward meeting had already been sent out when it had not.
Councilmember Jordan, our rules specifically prohibit claiming people on the bench lie. Please refrain from that.
I sent out the documentation, Mr. Mayor, to everyone on here that showed what you did. It showed your threatening emails and texts that you sent to Councilmember Boeppenai if we didn't vote the way. I think that's demeaning to the office. I just don't, I think it's beneath the dignity of the office. I think co-opting our council meeting and violating the ward rules is a problem. I asked the city attorney if he would send a cease and desist to you for using the marks and the logos of the city in your campaign website. And I'm not sure, has that happened yet, John?
No letter's been sent.
And I haven't gone forward and forced the issue on that by bringing it forward in a censure, but I don't think that that's what we're brought here to do in office. I think we should be spending this amount of time talking about how we stop this city-county merger from happening. And I'm sorry, I did not think that this is at all what the vote...
Councilor Werther.
I have several questions, and then I'll make a statement with regard to this. Mr. Stein, just to confirm, you said you simply wrote this up, sent it to the mayor, and it ended up on the agenda? Mr. Stevens, did you receive direction from the mayor on how items get placed on the agenda?
I had asked for an item to be put on the agenda, and he said it would take the full approval of the council to get put on the agenda.
Okay, so we have a very different way of handling things. Apparently, it's at the whim of the mayor. We'll leave it at that. The fact of the matter is, this item shouldn't even be on the agenda this evening, but it's here, and we'll have to deal with it, okay? The fact of the matter is, is that Ms. Jordan, Ms. Shay, Mr. Dillard, just look around, Mr. Boeppenai, myself, Mr. Stevens, Mr. Greg Noddy, and actually, most everybody here in one way or another, has been subject to that. It's a matter of do as I say, not as I do, and that's what we're dealing with now, quite frankly. This matter was put to bed. The resolution that's before us is a rehash of what has already been dealt with. The fact of the matter is, is that one thing that hasn't been spoken about by this council and is mentioned several times by members of the public is a word called tolerance. We have very different personalities up here. That's part of the beauty of being on this dais. If you don't have tolerance for your fellow councilperson, you don't belong here. It's as simple as that. The actions of Ms. Shay, I'm not gonna have to speak to them, I'm sure others will. The actions of Mr. Stein, I don't have to speak to him, others have, others will. The actions of the mayor, he'll have to speak to those. I'll speak to mine. The fact of the matter is, is that if we begin policing and attempting to censure at this level, every single one of us is subject to it. You might as well just put out a rubber stamp and hit every position, quite frankly. As a result, there's a need for a change in behavior, and I'll be quite honest about it, yes, it is. It's amongst all of us. It's a matter of tolerance and understanding. People are different. We have to tolerate people who pound on desk. We have to tolerate people who come up and maybe get in our faces. Heck, that's what we're elected to do, and it might be tough if it's a member of your own council, but it doesn't mean you go off the handle on it, quite frankly. And that's, this is ridiculous. This entire thing's a farce. It's destroyed decades-old relationships, and this is something that shouldn't have happened, quite frankly. And we all know what the residents tell us. They tell us to get along, they tell us to go ahead and do the city's business. Well, quite frankly, I see one side, several individuals that refuse to do that, in a lot of different ways. And until you understand the word tolerance, you won't be able to understand what your path forward is.
Councilor Dillard.
First of all, bear with me with my voice, I'm suffering from a similar cold as Councilmember Dogwell, and she's been kind enough to lend me some of her medications up here, and it is late. So, over the counter, yes, just for clarification. So far as I know, so far as I know, how about that for a lawyer's dodge? No, look, okay, so with regard to what Councilmembers Stein, Bertolino, and Taylor said, with all due respect to them, there were so many wandering logical fallacies and inconsistencies and nonsequiturs in what they said, I'm almost beginning to think it's some kind of conspiracy to run me out of time trying to rebut them all. So I'm not gonna do that, I'm not gonna take that bait, other than to pick off some of the top ones. Look, what Councilmember Werther said and Councilmember Jordan said is absolutely correct. If we want to just start censuring each other and play this game, let's just do it. There's plenty to censure people on. We could censure the mayor, we could censure Ray, we could censure Greg, we could censure almost everybody for having an outburst at some point. Guess what, folks? We're in politics. That is our chosen profession here. As my grandfather said, "Why don't you put your big boy pants on and just take the heat every once in a while?" When you endeavor to do a job, when you endeavor to be in public office... When you endeavor to do a job, when you endeavor to be in public office, it is obvious you're going to get lambasted every once in a while. We all know, everybody up here knows exactly what precipitated this. We know what happened back there on, a month ago, at late at night, when the tempers were high already because of topics on the, on the agenda. What Councilmember Stevens described, by the way, with the pounding on the table, that was dialed down to about 10% of the actual intensity. Councilmember Stein was out of order, as I recall, the chair, Mayor Boland, actually informed him that he was out of order for doing that. When we came out here, the disruption was not Councilmember Shea. The disruption was actually Councilmember Stein jumping up and yelling. That was the disruption. So, part of what Stein, Councilmember Stein, Bertolino, and Taylor said, I'm just going to go through a few here, um, let me see, the, the, the resolution speaks for itself. Well, no, it doesn't. It's just filled with a lot of generalities. As a matter of fact, he was inconsistent. He said it speaks for itself, but then he went back and said, "Well, let me explain a little bit more." No, it doesn't. It's just kind of a bland narrative, kind of throwing things, unproven allegations, just kind of throwing that out there, things that had been dealt with in mediation. Look, censure, and I was the maker of the motion nine or 10 months ago to send the original resolution of censure to mediation. And I did that for a very specific reason. Anytime we start taking action like this against fellow councilmembers or elected officials, it needs to be done carefully, with all of the information at hand, and as a last resort, if other means of resolving the dispute can be had. Mediation was done. Mediation was done where they examined the issues, where they talked to the parties, where we didn't have to come back to the council with a censure. Censuring each other without going for, without nothing more than these wandering inconsistencies in logic does nothing more than turn us into a kangaroo court. We are in a city-county merger debate. People are watching us. We are better than this. If we turn ourselves into a kangaroo court and just start censuring each other because our feelings got hurt, because some councilmember said something that we didn't agree with, all we're doing is handing better together a perfect argument to say, "See, this is what you get with these municipal governments. Just let us handle it, we're the pros, right?" So this is a ridiculous waste of time. Can we just put our big-boy and big-girl pants on and just move forward in peace?
Counselor Bartoni.
Thank you. So I think there was a comment earlier about Mr. Stein, an understatement about being imperfect. You can include me as a person that's imperfect. I'm torn on this. I've received quite a few, well, not quite a few, but a few calls and had some discussions with neighbors and residents in the last, I don't know, three, four, or five days. And, I mean, I am in favor of just moving past all the bickering and personal attacks like everybody has said. And I think when this came up the first time, there was a first reading, and I voted against this, just thinking, "Let's just get past this, let's just get past this." Well, I mean, unfortunately, it doesn't seem that that's happened. And there doesn't seem to be any end in sight, and I'm not even too sure if this censure will be the end either. I mean, there, you know, maybe, maybe it will, maybe it won't. I guess time will tell. I don't remember, I don't think I voted for the ad hoc committee also. I didn't, I wasn't a big fan of it. I didn't think it would be successful. Turns out, it wasn't. I disagree with a lot of the public comments earlier about this being something about a strong woman that has absolutely nothing to do with it, as far as I'm concerned. I'm married to a strong woman, and it's one of the reasons that I love her as much as I do. I work for a strong woman who is older than anybody on this council, and she would work circles around anybody in this room. So that has nothing to do with anything, as far as I'm concerned. I, you know, I, I agree and appreciate everything that, you know, Councilmember Shea has done for the city and fought for the city. We agree on probably over 90% of the, of the issues. Nobody's debating her intelligence, nobody's debating her dedication, her articulation. This is about behavior. And I mentioned it before, and I'll mention it again, the previous behavior with city staff, if I would have been accused of that, I would have, and, and there was a hint of truth to it, I would have been fired from my job. If I would have walked over to a fellow employee and got in their face the way that happened a month ago, I would have been fired. That behavior is unacceptable. And you can shake your head all you want, and maybe you wouldn't be fired. I don't think you, I don't think that that's right. So I don't, I just think that this is about behavior, and this is not about personalities, and it's definitely not about being a woman.
Counselor Shea.
So, I just want to correct a couple of things about the point of order in the closed session. Actually, it was Mr. Bartoni who made the motion for, you made the mo, okay, you made the motion to, to call the question, which procedurally is to, is to end debate, and the mayor overrode that to allow. We were discussing something very important. We were discussing something very important. Any attempt to cut off debate leaves some of us stranded without getting our questions answered from a legal representative. It's why we go in there, because we can't ask those things out here. So that was the order. You got that wrong. He made the motion. He was out of order. I had the floor. I was interrupted three times. I was laughed at. Not only that, but my statement, and I won't tell you what we talked about, but I said, I had a document in front of me, I said, "I have my opinions about this." Immediately, the mayor says, "Ooh, ooh, write that down, write that down," implying some prejudicial implication to what I said, impugning what I said. And by the way, minutes in the meetings aren't recorded by discussion in closed session, they're only recorded by motions and votes. So attempting to use the process against me, implying that I had some predetermined position, which he had no knowledge of, because all I said was I had an opinion. He don't know, he didn't know what that was. I didn't get a chance to even share it. Three times, impugned and laughed at. That behavior that the chair of the meeting employs in a closed session. It robs me, and he did it to Kevin as well, impugned his statements, and it leaves you without a place to be heard. You cannot participate as a duly-elected official in a legal proceeding. I'm being robbed of that. I'm being robbed of it, and the people that I represent are being robbed of it. It is not fair, and it's not becoming the office of the mayor. So I'm not going to belabor any points about we could all be brought up on censure. I would have already filed a censure for people if I thought that was going to do any good. It's not what we're doing here. Now, I have a statement. Because it's my time, I've been quiet about the previous effort. This resolution is without merit or substantive proof of allegations. The insertion of the reference to the previous attempted censure which failed is proof of the political motivation of this resolution. Over the course of enduring the first failed attempt to target me with censure, I was hindered by confidentiality, closed-session political attacks out of view of the public, fabricated accusations, and manipulated testimony. Throughout the process, I remained silent on my experience for which I was criticized and was held as proof of my guilt by some or assigned to me that I should be the one to guide the conclusion of that. I agreed to a mediation process approved by the council. I participated willingly. I have until now remained silent to afford the process to be absent of any allegation of my politicizing the matter or otherwise impacting the process and risking further critique which would be leveled at me. I waived my opportunity to share my experience out of deference to the public's request to move past the bickering and non-city-related matters. Trying to take the advice of residents as a serious, well-intended critique, I believed getting my side out was less important than moving on. But the time has ended. With the unfortunate opportunity presented now to rehash this settled matter, I will now have my chance to set the record straight for all of you that have these certain opinions about what you think you know. It is an undisputed fact that I have never lobbied any of you for special consideration during any time of my service, specifically around the matter involving Ryan Thomas. I have never coerced any vote or position from any of you or employed you to take my account of the events. I have never lobbied any of you for anything. The truth be told, I don't call people. All too often, the calls come to me. Thirteen of them, which is why I quit communication with some people, thirteen calls in five days. You know, if I don't take your call in five calls, I'm probably not going to take it So for the record, the matter of confidentiality by Mr. Thomas as the employee in the complaint was violated by Mr. Thomas himself. I have two emails that were sent to residents from him slandering me and identifying himself as the complainant, while I held true to the confidentiality. None of the other complainants ever cited one personal conversation with me, not one. It is inappropriate for those who crafted the current resolution but have never considered their obligation to objectively consider all the measure of information. This flagrantly politically abusive action is illustrated in this resolution, and it is the birth child of an unabated abusive authority specifically called out in our charter. When the institution of government is seen as the tool of control specifically to use for political gain of individuals, this is the result. Government assets, identities, and authority do not exist for the sole benefit of one but belong to the entire community. That is why you have the wording in the charter, specifically to act as the firewall against this kind of abuse. The abuse is growing since the first challenge was presented to this council in 2017. Manipulation of agendas, contorted procedural rules, using city identities to wield political axes, false accusations blasted out through government resource, the list is long, and the response from council is shallow and limited to blaming me. Every opportunity to remedy past abuse and rein in discrimination is met with shrugged shoulders and excuses. The complaints that have been settled are now being reintroduced, but without proper reference and facts, and so I will present them. Of the complaints filed from staff requesting mediation, none cited any direct conversation with me, none cited any conflict experience with me, and none cited any personal contact with me. Four staff members out of the eight opted out of mediation opportunity, half of them. Regarding any request from remaining employees, I decline the request to do the following with the following facts. In the mediation discussion with committee members, it was decided that mediation discussion would be done with only one person who I had contact, and that was Ryan Thomas. This was the committee's decision. Resolutions from that effort would conclude the mediation for the others due to the observation made by the committee that the listed requests on the forms were nearly identical. During the first and only mediation meeting with Mr. Thomas, the following facts were It was determined that by definition, the hostile work environment claim was not applicable. This is the definition of hostile work environment. Please take note. Overt chronic discussion of sexual exploits in the workplace, offensive or insensitive jokes that make light of the person's age.
One minute, courtesy, Counselor Shea.
I'm going to continue this, and if you don't let me, you will have to throw me out of here. This is my moment.
Counselor Shea, you have one minute, and it's according to the rules. The council would need to decide to extend debate that would take two-thirds vote, it would be up to the council.
Motion to extend debate, second.
Okay. We have a motion to extend debate and a second. We will do a roll call vote, please. Two-thirds, two-
Point of inquiry, if we extend the debate, is there an upper limit on that, or can we go?
So you really don't want to hear what I have to say. Just say that.
Counselor Shea, please. No one's saying-
Just let me finish, and we'll get done with this, okay?
How much more do you have? Let me-
I have, I have a little bit more to do. Yes, I do have a little bit more.
She can speak twice for 10 minutes. Can we give her the 20 minutes?
Thank you.
Just inquiring.
Doesn't exactly work that way, Counselor Stevens. Is there any objection to any member, is there any objection by any member of the council to Counselmember Shea continuing? If there is, then we'll need to do it procedurally correctly and have a vote to extend debate. Go ahead, Counselor Shea.
Thank you.
Objection.
Overt chronic discussion of sexual exploits in the workplace, offensive or insensitive jokes that make light of a person's age, disability, sex, and race, displaying sexually suggestive or racially insensitive pictures, inappropriate touching or aggressive physical contact, inappropriate or unwanted sexual overtures. Mr. Thomas objected to the legal description of a hostile work environment and denied making any claims that he would seek legal action against me. He denied making that statement to the mayor. He denied it. It's been acknowledged that the city attorney had no knowledge or participation in the threatening letter that was sent to me. The letter issued to me by Mayor Boland claiming the hostile work environment legal charge being brought by Mr. Thomas was not this Thomas, Mr. Thomas's statement, but that of the mayor. Claiming the forfeiture of legal protection afforded to me as a city representative was incorrect and unsubstantiated, and request for substantiation from my attorney went unanswered. The mayor has no legal authority to represent Ryan Thomas or the city of Wildwood on legal matters. It was admitted by Mr. Thomas that his claim of several meetings that he attributed to me were actually only two. It was admitted by Mr. Thomas that any emails he received from me were not hostile to other employees. It was admitted by Mr. Thomas that upon my visit to his office to discuss matters of the audit being brought to the council about the Celebrate Wildwood event was not represented to the council honestly, and he regretted doing it. He said this. It was at that meeting, after much effort to obtain an answer, he admitted it was not Councilmember DuHart who requested the audit, but it was Mr. Boland. That's deception, people. That's deception in presenting information to this council. And if you think I'm ever going to be okay with that, you're mistaken. It was admitted by Mr. Thomas that I never threatened his job. As I do not have the authority to fire him, I'm one vote out of 16. Do the math. The exact words were this. I said, "Under a different council that was more engaged and better informed, he might be at risk of losing his job." And he acknowledged that fact. Without going through the entire mediation discussion, I offered multiple opportunities to have Ryan Thomas explain how he wished to resolve the mediation. I counted nine times that I asked the question, and each time, he responded with more accusations about social media, not about the meetings that allegedly were proof of his unsubstantiated claims of hostile work environment. For two hours, I was called a liar because of his belief about my controlling social media posts. When asked to provide the detailed information regarding his sources, he declined and made vague references about everybody. In short, I found his accusations were contrived and unsupported by the facts for which he admitted. I offered options for his resolution, including me not having any contact with him, which was not acknowledged by him. I completely acknowledged my visits to Mr. Thomas on two occasions, acknowledged and corrected his assertions about the subject matters that I went to discuss, and I acknowledged my- my frustration that I expressed to him over his evasive responses. I agreed to avoid him in person and only communicate through email. None of the offerings were acknowledged or agreed to by him, none. I objected to not coming to a resolution at the end of the meeting, but agreed to reschedule. The date was canceled, the first reschedule was canceled, it was rescheduled again, then canceled after the meeting room was booked for the same date of the mediation meeting, which I brought to the attention of the committee. After two weeks, Mr. Thomas withdrew from mediation for reasons unrelated to the complaint. Any claim that I declined to continue mediation is patently false. Had the mayor of Wildwood not initiated and unsubstantiated inappropriate, in my view, and illegal representation of the facts just to smear me to employees and the public, this could have gone a whole lot better. The problem is not me coming to the city administrator to get honest accounts of details that impact the city, the residents, and the council. The problem is clearly a political agenda to punish, impugn, and target me as an adversary of the mayor, and I assume at the time, Mr. Thomas. I'm not the problem. False accusations are a poor substitute for leadership. Targeting me for retaliation is the problem, and is well documented since before the election of 2017. Using city resources and illegally representing the city by assigning legal remedies for false accusations is egregious and qualifies as abuse of office. There have been public relations failures, the velodrome, City of Wildwood audit, violating civil rights of residents, charter violations, interfering with elections, using city resources. These are problems, and I'm not obligated to ignore them, and I will, or will be, I be prohibited from discussing them with the city administration. Finally, where does the restoration of my reputation happen? While these accusations and complaints were done publicly with the luxury of anonymity for some, immune from being held accountable for false accusations, I don't expect much from an administration and a council prior to April 2018 that approved an attempt to censure me before hearing both sides and accusing before assessing the facts. However, my efforts to have discussions regarding all the transgressions of city policy and violations will not be abated. Any effort to continue with this charade is evidence of wrongdoing based on claims which are not supported by evidence and is just a continuation of abusive city meeting time, contrive political retaliation conducted by diminutive political hacks with no other option for feeling superior than to attempt to take down someone they are terrified, might be better at this job than they are. It's not okay. But if it proceeds, you hurt the city, not me. You provide more proof of why you are the mistake. And I do agree with you, Mr. Bar Tony, that this is not about strong women. I have argued to everyone that has said that to me, I get calls after every meeting from people who say, "You're being discriminated against because you're a woman." I don't agree. I'm being discriminated against because I pose a serious threat to correcting problems, and apparently, I'm enough of a political threat that I have to be damaged prior to an election in order that their chosen candidate might actually have a chance.
I would just say a couple of things. I hadn't planned to mention this, but since it was raised, and there have been several comments relative to the procedure of closed session, and I have cleared with the city attorney that it is okay to say this. For clarification, this is exactly what happened procedurally.
Point of order, can I call the question?
You don't have the floor to call the question. So in closed session, Councilmember Shea asked to be on a list to discuss the issue at hand. She asked me on the list after much discussion had occurred, including several comments and turns at speaking by Councilmember Shea prior to that. Councilmember Bar Tony made a motion to call the question, that is correct, and he did so, I believe, because of all of that discussion, and it obtained a second. However, Councilmember Shea had asked to speak again prior to the time that motion had been made. She was therefore on the list. And therefore, while technically under Roberts' rules, the calling of the question could have occurred, I thought it was courteous, since she was on the list, to at least ask whether it was possible, if there was no objection, for her to continue to speak, and then the question would be called. So, I turned to Councilmember Bar Tony, and he agreed to that, the second agreed to that, and I announced it to the council. And that is why Councilmember Stein's motion to call the question was not in order, because there was already one on the floor with the consent that Councilmember Shea be allowed to speak. And it was my intent in pursuing that process to give you the idea or the option to do that. That being said, unrelated to that, I just want to mention that regardless of what happens on this motion, if you, or for that matter, any member of the body, threaten everyone in this body, on this body, and me, with the fact that you will be yanked out of here and have to be yanked out of here to avoid complying with the rules, regardless of what happens on this resolution, I will ask the council to again consider more stringent action against you. That is something that a civilized society simply does not do, and we don't do it in Wildwood. I don't see anyone else on the, I'm sorry, Councilmember Manson, my apology.
You know, I'll be brief, because this matter, to me, is pretty straightforward. And as was noted in the proposed resolution of censure, it details not just an isolated incident of bad behavior, but rather, a pattern of bad behavior over an extended period of time and with multiple individuals. You know, I hope, well, it's at least my hope, that this censure will also serve as a roadmap to a return of at least some modicum to this civility at this council. I'd also hope that this would bring an end, or ameliorate anonymous social media websites that traffic in personal attacks, innuendo, and character assassination. Further, you know, as was mentioned earlier, and you've heard talk about it, the council has never resolved the concerns about city staff morale. And certain activities in the recent past have not only been unproductive, but what's little talked about, it comes at a tremendous cost to the city. And quite frankly, constituents I hear from are fed up with much of the boorish behavior at council, and of course, that's why I'm going to support this censure.
The statement I'm going to make is mostly to clarify some things that I've heard that I don't agree with. Ms. Shea and I have worked together on several issues, most of the time, we agree on issues, and we've worked together on campaigns. And she does her homework, she is committed, she knows what she's doing, and she does a good job. And I have told her more than once, don't attack the person, attack the issue, because when she gets upset and you don't agree with her, she gets verbally abusive sometimes. That's not okay. That's not okay for any of us. I also, I heard that somebody said that most of us vote with the mayor. I vote for my residents, I don't vote with anybody else. I don't align myself with anyone up here, I'm elected by the residents, and that's who I vote for. I also heard that we need tolerance. We do need tolerance, but continuously getting in somebody's face, saying things in a mean-spirited way, that's not tolerance. We, I have to say for Greg, when we came back from closed session, Tammy walked immediately up to Greg and made a comment to him that I will not repeat. He did get upset, he stood up, Ms. Shea stood right in front of him and said, "Don't touch me, don't touch me." There was no way Greg was going to touch her. And then we had to have the officers come up here to get everybody to calm down. That's just another example of some misbehavior. We do need to get along, we do, but if somebody continuously instigates something, you can't get along with that. You know, the whole thing about mediation, I asked for Tammy's letter that she wrote and Ryan's letter that he wrote. Tammy said she would give me the letter, I've yet to see the letter, I read Ryan's I just hope that when she's upset about something, she'll take a step back and think about it before she gets aggressive. She does a good job, she does her homework, we've agreed on many things, we've worked together. But getting upset and yelling at people and making comments in someone's face is not No, that's been my experience with you as well. And it's not okay, it's just not. And we can't get along if one of us is doing that, or if multiple of us is doing that. And the public is tired of that. Our residents have made it clear that they're tired of all the bickering and not being able to get along. You know, all I'll say is you're better than Tammy, please don't scream at anybody anymore.
Sorry, Councilmember Stevens.
So, a vote for censure, what I'm hearing from some of the members on the dais is you're trying to vote Councilmember Shea some different behavior? Seriously? Is that, that's what you think this will accomplish? I mean, could you vote me fifteen pounds lighter and ten years younger? That's what we're doing here? We're just going to take a vote and all of a sudden magically, Councilmember Shea becomes it? That's not it at all. Everyone up here, if you're going to vote for this, you're voting to punish a council member for something Councilmember Stein did.
Okay, seeing nope, Councilmember Greg Nonny.
Yeah, I'm not going to take a long time, we've got work yet to do for the City of Wildwood, which I think that's what we're supposed to be here for, but I'm going to use an old slogan that's been around a long time. People who live in glass houses shouldn't be throwing stones or any other heavy objects because of what you'll do to the glass, right? If you vote to get anybody censured on this council without good cause, I'd be very careful about what you're doing, because, you know what? If it can happen to somebody, it can happen to you, and I think you really don't want that to happen. I'm telling you now, I've had enough, and so have they. I'm tired of watching this show. I'm one of the older members of this council. I don't need to put up with this kind of monkey business. I deserve a little respect, and so do all of you. And it's time that you start giving it. It's time you start giving respect to the people that we represent, and you've got to do that, and you've got to do it now. End this monkey business tonight. Don't put yourselves in any jeopardy by making yourself a target down the road, because I'll promise you that if anybody screws up even this much, that much of the end of my little finger, they're going to be in big trouble, because I'm going to be watching what you do, okay? And I promise you, this will not end well, because we're going to fight this battle over and over again until you all get the picture that it's got to stop, and it stops right now, tonight. Thank you.
I think what's really essential here is the fact that there's a pattern, the fact that we just had a long discussion about Ryan, our former city administrator, maybe if censure had happened the first time, maybe staff would have felt more supported. I will say this, I think most, in response to Mr. Greg Nonny's statement that if you mess up this much, it's going to happen to you, I don't see that. And the reason why I don't see that is there was forty percent of the city staff had made a complaint. We opted for mediation, and then we opted for forbearance. This is not something that this council is doing lightly, but the council has a responsibility to ask members to respect the dignity of the office, and this is an extraordinary step. I will say one of the things that I've noticed, though, is this: everyone, most everyone on this council has been willing to say, "I have made a mistake." Mr. Stein says, "I might have acted improperly. Earlier, I was trying to make a point, it was ruled out of order. I was overly aggressive with that." But that's, and I admit it, but I listened to Ms. Shea. It's not what she said, it's what she didn't say. Maybe I made some mistakes. No, we heard about the conspiracy against Ms. Shea. We heard that it is the mayor's fault, her actions. I think there's something going on here where there's a persistent unwillingness to recognize a misdeed, and I think that's what censure does, says, "Look, this is a serious issue. Please, please respect the dignity of the office." I mean, people are forgiving, and I think this council is quite forgiving. I think when people say, "Hey, I made a mistake," and I know that sometimes, I've heard people say, if someone says, "I made a mistake," I'm not going to vote this way. You know, people are willing to forgive, but I've never heard, "Maybe I was wrong at yelling at Ryan Thomas, maybe I was a little over aggressive." Nothing. Whenever forty percent of the city staff file a complaint, it's the mayor's fault. It's a conspiracy. It's because, it's because I pose a serious threat to you diminutive political hacks. I think that says why we need to do this.
Seeing nope, Councilmember Dillard.
I know it's a long night, and we're all tired, some of us sick. Pardon me for being a little nauseous at the high lofty talk about all of the, not, you know, what is it, bringing down the character of the office and all of this kind of stuff. About a year ago, I stood right there, public participation, and outlined exactly what the mayor did to me three days after I got into the race before I had said anything publicly about him. And if you all don't know what I'm talking about, you can go back to that and read it or see it and hear what I said about it. Sending legally threatening letters to my employer, trying to get me to drop out of the race. That is the kind of bullying, that is the kind of bullying and threats that we are talking about here. And all of you who are going to vote yes to the censure tonight, I hope that you think about that and think about what really is beneath the dignity of some office. And yes, Ms. Shea is absolutely right. When we were back there, and this is not exclusive to closed sessions, he does this to me in open sessions, he scoffs, he laughs, he rolls his eyes, he bangs a gavel at me inappropriately, tries to cut me off, tries to throw me off my game, tries to cast aspersion on my motive, not following his own rules. He does it, he does it selectively, he does it to me, it's bullying. It's beneath the dignity of the office. I'm not boring myself to do a censure for this, because I want to move on. I've made my statement, the people decided last April to sit me in this seat, excuse me, to sit me in this seat to continue to call out the abusive behavior that happens by the mayor in this administration. This is an example of it. Thank you.
Okay, seeing no further, just, Councilmember Shea.
There's no conspiracy, I'm not alleging a conspiracy. I'm not alleging a conspiracy. I'm talking about facts. I guess you didn't hear all the other things I said, you focused on one thing, and what I said was the truth. These aren't conspiracies, these are facts that were medded out in mediation. And when you can repeat forty percent of the, and now it sounds like you're trying to blame me for Ryan Thomas's resignation, I think you actually said that on your blog, which is patently unprovable and false.
I didn't say that.
Okay, well, what is your implication? Your implication is that somehow, or your implication is that somehow, because I stick up for residents who have been wrongly treated through a process established through administrative tasking, that somehow, that that's responsible for low morale or the vacancy of an office or a job? These aren't conspiracies, these are f- These are facts. You might pay a little closer attention to what I've actually demonstrated, and can all be proved. I'm tired of being assigned this conspiratorial mind when everything is documented. I didn't ring a charter complaint because I didn't have the proof, okay? We have evidence of this administration lying to an investigator for the state of Missouri. I'm sure most of you don't know that, because you don't follow it close enough. There's an investigation in which the staff, and I don't know under whose direction, maybe the legal direction, maybe the mayor's direction, lied to an investigator. It's demonstratable. So don't give me lectures about a dignity of the office. There is a corruption of authenticity and ethics in this administration by way of the mayor's leadership. And I'll work every day to uncover that, and I'm not gonna apologize for it, because there's nothing to apologize for.
Okay, seeing no further discussion. Roll call vote on the resolution, please. A yes vote is to adopt Resolution 2019-13.
Councilmember Stein.
Yes.
Councilmember Werther.
Nay.
Councilmember Garitano.
Yes.
Councilmember Stevens.
No.
Councilmember Greg Noni.
No.
Councilmember McGowan.
Yes.
Councilmember Bartoni.
Yes.
Councilmember Manten.
Yes.
Councilmember Shay.
No.
Councilmember Dillard.
No.
Councilmember Dodwell.
Can you come back to me?
Councilmember Taylor.
Yes.
Councilmember Bertolino.
Yes.
Councilmember McCutcheon.
Yes.
Councilmember Boeb.
No.
Councilmember Dodwell.
No, you don't.
Jordan. Jordan, I'm sorry. There's nine yeses.
Please, we can't hear that.
Nine yeses.
I'm sorry.
Nine.
Nine to seven. Okay. Motion carries. All right. Moving to miscellaneous approval of expenditures, councilmembers, you've been provided with those. Does any member of the council have any questions with respect to them? If not, I would entertain a motion to approve the expenditures. May be Councilmember Manten, second.
I had a question on.
Let's get a second.
We'll take your questions. I'll second.
Second by Councilmember Bartoni. Councilmember Stevens.
Just on the... I don't know who puts these on the website, but just the format, is it possible to get a portrait format versus the landscape format, just because it's terribly difficult to read on the iPad because of the way that it rotates on the expenditures? So... Like, we've gotten there before where it's in a portrait format, and it's just it's much easier to read on the iPad if you could do that, is all.
Okay. Any further discussion on the motion? Seeing none, all in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Any abstentions? Motion carries. Joe, receipt and file.
Mr. Mayor, members of City Council, the Planning and Zoning Commission approved the site development plan for the relocation of the community garden to the City Hall site. The Department of Planning and Parks is working on an estimate of the cost of its installation. We'll have that to committee as soon as possible. Are there any questions? The department would be glad to try to answer them at this time.
Any questions for Joe?
Thank you.
Okay, thank you. Anything else under miscellaneous? Okay, I would entertain a motion to adjourn. May be Councilmember Manten's, or second. May be Councilmember McGowan, non-debatable. All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Any abstentions? We are adjourned. Thank you.